This program is brought to you by cable franchise fees and generous donations from viewers like you.
Good evening. We have three different meetings tonight, or basically one meeting with three different. So we're going to start with a capital improvement program presentation. Before we do that, I just want to make a couple of statements about our meeting, which is virtual. This is allowed because of Governor Baker's order. And I'm going to call upon each of the counselors who are present at this time and make sure that they can hear me and I can hear them. So we'll start with George Ryan.
President.
Pat DeAngelis.
President.
Andy Steinberg.
President.
Mandy Jo Hanneke.
President.
Darcy Demont.
President.
Sarah Schwartz.
Present.
Thea Schreiber.
Present.
Evan Ross.
Present.
So by my count, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight counselors present and others may be joining us. So given that we have a quorum of the council present, I'm calling this meeting to order at 5:31. There is no chat room. If there is a disruption in the service, please let a FEMA know as fast as possible or let me know. And we will either pause the meeting until we can get everyone back, or we will just make sure that there's a record of that in the minutes. And I just saw another counselor come on and it's Alyssa Brewer. Alyssa, can you hear me?
Yes.
Demonstrate. Thank you. All right. So our presentation tonight is on the capital improvement program, the recommended capital improvement program. It's going to be presented by the town manager, the director of finance, and Sonia, the controller. And it is preceding the public forum. So there won't be any public comment during this period, although if we have time, counselors might want to ask some questions. The public comment will occur in the next part of the meeting, which is actually the public forum, which officially begins at 6 o'clock. So with that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Paul, Sean, and Sonia. And I believe that Sonia, you are, I mean, Sean, you're going to be doing the slides.
Yeah. So I'll do a little introduction and Sean's going to be sharing slides with you and then doing the bulk of the presentation. So we had such high hopes at one point earlier this year. We were doing really well on all of our capital planning, our operating budgets, all that was going forward and then COVID-19 hit. So tonight, what we want to do is sort of lead you through the process for our capital improvement program. Talk about a little bit about what the impact of COVID-19 did to us and to our budget, to our capital improvement program. And you'll see that clearly in the presentation tonight. We want to talk about the program itself, what we're proposing, and talk about the five-year plan. And really talk about the role of JCPC, the Joint Capital Planning Committee. They did a tremendous work, recognized the situation. And I want to thank all the members of the JCPC, which includes members of the council, members of the school committee, and members of the Board of Library Trustees, who all contributed time to this. And I note that my plan program is slightly different than what they had recommended. And you'll see this slight difference and we'll explain what that is. It's not a gigantic thing. One of the things I wanted to mention was that JCPC's work is not finished. The plan of action at this moment in time is to bring them back in the fall and have them go in more detailed department by department through our capital budget. So one of the things I just want to recognize is, you know, Sonia had taken this on so all the way to near conclusion and then everything blew up. And then Sean has come on and helped to move this forward. So I'm going to turn it over to Sean Mangan, our finance director, and thank them for the work that they did to pull this together. And I hope you enjoy the presentation.
A lot of people say that they're going to enjoy the presentation. I'm going to share my screen now. Hello, everybody. So a couple of things we're going to go through tonight or this evening, we're going to talk about what the charter says about the capital improvement program, the role of JCPC, the process that we, sort of the overall capital process and how it flows throughout the year. The specific impact of COVID-19, the FY21 recommended projects and the five-year plan that's related to that. Briefly about the impact on maintenance and operating costs, and then turn it over for any questions. So this is the quote from the charter that talks about the capital improvement program. I'll read it quickly. "The town manager with advice of JCPC, composed of at a minimum representatives from town council, school committee, and library trustees, shall create an improvement program which shall include a clear summary of contents, a list of all the capital improvements proposed to be undertaken during the next five fiscal years with supporting data and rationale, cost estimates, including method of financing and recommended time schedules, and an estimated annual cost of operating and maintaining the facilities and/or equipment included." So we're going to talk about primarily the first bullet point tonight, but we are working on all of those bullet points and have systems in place to share all of those. The JCPC plays a very important role in the process as they make the recommendation to the town manager. The committee itself has sort of evolved over the last 30 years, almost 30 years. 1992 is when it was created. So sort of the role it played this year for us, a couple of times, the first go around and then very briefly the second time, is to help review departmental capital requests and their five-year plans to review the available funding sources and the changes that are proposed to those funding sources. They hear presentations from department heads and they get, have an opportunity to ask questions about various projects and future projects coming up. They get to hear the capital requests, of which we had one this year, and, or resident capital requests, of which we had one this year. And they ultimately make the recommendation to the town manager. And the little balancing picture on the right is really what JCPC does, which is try to balance usually a much larger request from departments and from residents with a smaller amount of funding that's available and try to achieve an overall program that meets the needs of the town. So this is just a quick snapshot of what the capital process looks like, or some of the highlights of the capital process throughout the year. In July and August is typically when department heads are starting to spend the money that was a capital money that was approved the prior fiscal year. And accounting and finance are getting the new capital project set up from the prior fiscal year. September through December is really when a lot of the heavy planning and preparation work happens. Department heads work on the requests for the upcoming capital cycle. The town manager and the finance department will meet with department heads to review their five-year capital plans. And it's when we make a lot of the updates to the capital improvement program. Then January through March or sometime around there, depending on how things evolve throughout the year, is when the JCPC process will start. And it usually begins with sort of a rough draft of the capital improvement program that's presented to JCPC with presentations. JCPC will begin its vetting process. And at the end, JCPC will make a recommendation to the town manager sometime around April 1st. And then the town manager has the month of April to finalize the capital improvement program and deliver it to the town council by May 1st. And then the council and finance committee have May and June to review the capital improvement program, hold a public forum, and ultimately vote on the capital program, capital improvement program by June 30th. So some of the specific impacts this year from COVID-19 really shaped the capital improvement program. So I think it was about March when JCPC was sort of halted and all the work to that point sort of stalled and we really had to start over. When JCPC reconvened, it did so with about half of the funding that it was previously looking at. And you'll see a snapshot of how much funding was allocated in a few slides. The process for JCPC was condensed pretty significantly. So normally they've got a few months to do their work and we sort of start over in late April and had the month of May and try to get it done before the end of May. And one of the commitments that we, or one of the points that we discussed with JCPC this year, which is the same as with the operating budget, is that we do plan on having to revisit the capital budget in the fall. And you'll see why in a few slides. And see how things are going, what funding is available at that point, if things have gotten worse or gotten better, and work with JCPC to develop a plan moving forward that can be brought back to the council. So a few elements of the capital program that we were hoping to have ready for this meeting tonight that have been delayed a little bit are the townwide asset listing and the updated five-year plan. You will see a five-year plan tonight, but it's the five-year plan as it was back in March. One of the things when we were redoing the capital improvement program that we sacrificed in order to spend more time on the current year was re-viewing the out-years, FY22 and beyond. So that's something we'll be working on with department heads. Once we get more, a better idea of what our funding looks like going forward, is to redo that, those out-years, FY22 and beyond, to bring that back in the fall. And one of the highlights of the capital improvement program this year, that's a little bit new, is you'll see that we've allocated funds to a capital reserve account. And the point of that account is to reflect the uncertainty of town operations next year. We, we thought about prioritizing funds to individual projects, but not knowing what schools are going to look like, what the local economy is going to look like. It was hard to pick certain projects over others and say this was going to be a priority. So we set aside funds in a capital reserve. So if there's any emergencies that come up between now and the fall, we have funds available to address those concerns. And then in the fall, we can make a decision whether we should allocate funds from this capital reserve to specific projects at that point or maintain the reserve going forward. But it'll be something that we'll review based on the economic conditions in the fall. So onto the projects that have been recommended for FY21. So from cash capital, we have recommended two specific projects and then the capital reserve. So the first specific project are roads. This originally was in the capital improvement program budget for about a million dollars. And through the JCPC process and the town managers' work on the capital improvement program, it was pared down to about $530,000. And then sidewalks was originally in the budget at $200,000 and that was reduced down to $170,000. And these two projects are specifically targeted to address the concerns we've heard from residents and counselors about the high priority of roads and addressing the backlog of road projects in the town. So those two specific projects total about half of the available cash capital. Total cash capital, you can see at the bottom is 1.4 million. And so that's roughly half. And the remaining half would be put into this capital reserve that would be dedicated to address any urgent projects that arise between now or July 1st and the fall. And then at that point, we would reevaluate what funds are available for capital. And the pie chart just shows roughly half and half. Outside of cash capital, there are a couple of other funding sources for potential projects. So state aid, chapter 90 funds, typically around $840,000. It's not approved yet, so that's why we put the asterisk. And we'll find out more about whether that, that funding will be available when the state approves, approves the chapter 90 allotment. And then the other funding source that's new is, I think it's from a tax on Uber. It's something that's been our ride sharing services. And it's a new, new revenue source that we can use for downtown improvements. And so we are allocating $62,000 for that purpose. So this is a snapshot of the full five-year plan. And I'll go through it kind of slowly because it's a little numbery. So the, the top half of this table are the funding sources and the bottom half of this table are the expenditures. And the shaded gray column is FY21. So at the top, you'll see the calculation of the levy. And we do that because typically our cash capital is based on a percentage of the levy. Our goal for FY21 was 10% and we were there up until COVID-19 interfered. And so now we're proposing roughly 5%. And then the other two funding sources, 62,000 is that the ride sharing money and state aid, 841,000. So the total funding for capital available for FY21 is the $3,687,934. Now those out-years, again, we haven't updated those. So if you look to the right, FY22 and beyond, those have not been updated. When we come back in the fall, we'll have a better projection of what funds might be available for capital in FY22. Depending how things go, that, that number could be smaller than where it is now. And at the bottom, you'll see the expenditure side and it breaks down sort of how the, the capital project is going to be financed. So whereas it's funded by cash capital, the first thing we have to take off the top of our cash capital is any actual debt that has been obligated in prior years. And so that number in FY21 is 1,377,400. Again, that's projects that have already been approved in the past. They were approved to be from a borrowing. And so this is the debt payment on those projects. And then whatever's left over after that and a projected debt can be allocated towards new projects. And so that number for this year was the 1,406,651. And then below that are the other funding sources again and projects that are funded by those different sources. And so you can see for FY21, we've allocated the full 3.7 million dollar figure. And again, a lot of our work and from now until the fall, we'll be looking at those out-years and trying to come back with a more realistic projection of what those look like. One thing you'll note when you look at the out-years is that there's a pretty big gap between the project requests and how much funding is available. And so I did identify a few of the strategies that we're going to be implementing or at least considering to try to get this plan in balance. We'll review different financing sources, whether, you know, something that we might want to consider borrowing for or lease options. Some of the projects potentially could be CPA eligible, so we'll, we'll look at that. And also if there's any grants available. We need to look in general at our vehicle replacement schedule because one of the biggest sort of buckets in FY22 for projects that are backlogged is vehicles. So we need to definitely look at that again. And then we just also have to potentially remove or delay projects that are the lowest priorities for the town. This is just another look at the capital plan from sort of a department view. So again, you'll see the capital reserve at the top with the 706,000. And then the rest of the money that's budgeted for this year is in the public works highway. And it's the combination of the cash capital for roads and sidewalks and also the chapter 90 funds and the downtown improvements. And lastly, impact on maintenance operating costs. So try to focus this on the FY21 projects. We should see lower maintenance operating costs from any of the roads that do get replaced or improved. And ultimately, those costs will probably be shifted to other roads that deteriorate more and need more work. But it should reduce, at least for the specific roads that are replaced, those costs should go down. And before I turn it over for questions and feedback, one thing I'll just note that came up a lot at the JCPC level are about potential expenditures next year for COVID-19. So we have been working with departments pretty closely to get a sense of what their needs are or what they're projecting their needs are. You may have seen an article for the schools and the purchase they've done. We just recently submitted a request to the state for CARES Act money on Friday. And it was roughly a $600,000 request and it covered schools and fire and public safety and a bunch of departments in town. And that's our initial request for what departments know right now, there's going to be another window where we can request additional funds coming up. And then on top of the CARES Act money, we also have to request funds from FEMA in the near future as well. So most of the capital expenditures or even operating expenditures associated with COVID-19 are going to be funded through either FEMA or the CARES Act. And with that, I will turn it back for questions.
Okay. As always, if you would like to ask questions and you're a counselor, please raise your hand. Mandy Jo, I see your hand up.
Yes, thank you. Um, I, you know, as, as a person who served on JCPC, I know that this is not the same as the recommendation that JCPC made to the town manager. But I am curious, when we saw this recommendation at JCPC prior to, you know, the, the plan was originally a 50-50 split, the second week of JCPC. And then the recommendation that the JCPC made back to the manager was actually a different split, 45-55, I believe. But the 50-50 split had a different allocation of roads to sidewalks. That different allocation had a 600,000 into roads and 100,000 into sidewalks. And what we are seeing tonight has 170 in sidewalks and 530 in roads. And so I'd like to know what the reason for that change was, because that's different from the what was presented to JCPC three weeks ago.
So I'll, I'll start, Paul, and you can add. So the part of it was, and this was just sort of a weird development of the way JCPC spoke about the projects, is that roads and sidewalks sort of got lumped together throughout the process when they're sort of, you know, there are separate buckets. They sort of got lumped together. So in some ways, the, the allocation between the two got a little blurred in terms of how much gets allocated to each of them. When I talked to Paul about it, we decided that more money was needed for sidewalks based on some of the things that he's been hearing. And Paul, I don't know if you want to elaborate on that piece.
Yeah, I think we've noticed a lot. We've made great progress. DPW has made great progress on a lot of road work. But we need a lot more sidewalk work and we have pending projects that we need to move forward on. And so I felt like it was important to allocate additional funds into sidewalks to prioritize that and to make it clear to the, to the residents that that was something that was high priority for lots of different reasons. One is a lot more people are going to be walking. They are walking. A lot more people are out and about. And it was just a, I felt like that was a higher priority.
Kathy, you have your hand up.
Yes, it's, Mandy asked the question I was going to ask. I just wanted to bring more, one more point that came out during JCPC and have you confirm, because we didn't have an opportunity and the staff had not had an opportunity to revise the out-years of '22 through '25 or look carefully at the delayed projects. There was a recommendation that JCPC continue to meet in the fall, starting in September. With that focus and also looking at the reserve fund on, you know, what are we starting to see with things that we felt we were taking a bet on that we had a high probability being able to last a whole year on some critical systems? And how are we doing? You know, sort of a mid-year check. But I just wanted to confirm that we're on for having that focus on the out-years as well as the, it's not even a mid-year check. It's the first three months in or the first two months into the new year, when we know the end of last year more completely too.
Yeah, absolutely. That's something that we, Paul and I spoke about and Paul, you know, gave the green light that we definitely should do. Another reason why we have to meet is there may be other funding sources that are available at that time and potentially more money available for capital. So, you know, in addition to looking at those out-years, we just need to look at even FY21's funding and see what's available because there might be a federal program or a state program that helps address some of the revenue loss by that point. The only, we do have a deadline and I'll look to Sonia to reaffirm this, but we do have a deadline where we have to do that process before October when she does the recap. Sonia, do you want to just confirm that?
Does that figure out how to unmute again? For the capital?
Yeah.
Because we're budgeted a reserve, the recap doesn't matter because the reserve is what will get took to the
Right. But if we, but if we appropriate more funds for capital, would, we would have to do that before October, before the recap is done if we were to go beyond the reserve?
If we thought we were getting more revenues coming in?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Let me add, Kathy, that the, preparing that memo is on the town manager's list. We just decided that we had so many things on this week's agenda not to bring it forward, but there's every intention to do so. The question, I think, now that I'm hearing this deadline, is whether or not we should bring that forward. And you might also try meeting before September.
Okay. And that, thank you for that. Cause I just thought we should probably, probably try to schedule that meeting and have a clear agenda for it. And just in, in the context, Sean, when you gave the list of things we'll be looking at over the four years, you brought up vehicles. We, we also at JCPC this time around didn't get sort of a vehicle inventory of what do we have and how old are they are. So I think having some semblance of that going into that meeting would be good too.
Yeah, that's, that's actually something we're working on right now and we'll make sure it's ready for when we come back together.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy, for bringing all that back up. Dorothy Pam, you have your hand up.
Yes. Thank you, Paul and JCPC for putting an emphasis on roads and sidewalks. I do have a question about sidewalks. I know that the emphasis this year has been on creating some new ones that had needed to be done for a long time. Is there money in this sidewalk budget for repairing of existing sidewalks?
Yes. Yep. Ultimately, you know, it's a combination of this DPW superintendent who decides, working with his constituents in terms of what projects get done. But yes, it can be used for sidewalk replacement or new sidewalks.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And Darcy, you have your hand up.
Oh, you're muted, Darcy.
Please unmute, Darcy.
Early on, the Energy and Climate Action Committee submitted a budget request. And I, you know, and then COVID-19 happened. So it's, you know, very understandable that that was not something that could happen in this fiscal year. I'm just hoping that, you know, when I looked at the, the fact that we have a five-year capital plan now and we also have a goal that we're supposed to reduce our, our emissions by 25% by 2025 in five years, that that's going to be a piece that we're going to need to look at. And I'm hoping that we can, we can get the council updated sooner than later on what that, you know, the direction that the committee is going in with the municipal vulnerability preparedness grant. And one thing that I just wanted to ask, one of the things that we had supported ECAC was the resident capital request. And just wondered what the conversation was about that? And whether it's going to carry over to the next fiscal year or how, how that's going to be dealt with?
So from, anybody else can jump in, but the way I interpret it is that the request hasn't been approved or rejected. It's that we'll consider it again in the fall when we come back together. I didn't, I don't think the committee made any decision in terms of whether to recommend it or not recommend it at this point.
That's that's totally correct. And it's, Darcy, it's potentially on the list to be dip into the reserve pool. And one of the things that we had asked for when it came up was to make sure they talked to the school committee and that the school committee was in support of that. So my understanding is that has happened, but it was just to, to do the full circle of its solar can, particularly over the parking lots is a study. So it's not gone. As Sean said, it was not gone like voted no or even rated in any way. It's just literally everything, there's no line item now except for roads and sidewalks. It's everything else. All the other capital spending is in this thing we've called the capital reserve.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments at this time? Okay, we're about two minutes before the end of this session. And we're going to be moving right on to the public forum. Any other last comments?
Just for clarification, no one has to log off. They just stay where we are and we just start, continue, right?
Mandy Jo, you have your hand up.
It's not a different Zoom number than Paul.
No.
I, I was going to clarify too, that we're going to technically adjourn this and then recall to order at 6, right?
Correct. Okay. So seeing that there are no hands and we're going to be doing public comment on the next meeting, I'm going to adjourn this. And in one minute, we will reconvene and I will go back and take roll again. Okay, um, let me just check to make sure that everybody can hear that is here from the council, uh, Dorothy Pam.
Everybody probably walked away.
I'll move, I'll move on to Kathy Shane.
Yes, here, present and can hear.
Thank you. Alyssa?
Present and can hear.
Andy Steinberg?
Yes, I can hear.
Pat DeAngelis?
I can also hear.
Mandy Jo?
I'm here.
Steve Schreiber?
Here and can hear.
Um, Darcy Dumont?
Here.
George Ryan?
Present.
Sarah Schwartz?
You're here.
Evan Ross?
Still here.
Okay, and Dorothy Pam? Did I miss anybody? Please?
The girls are.
Okay, um, again, this is a virtual meeting allowed by Governor Baker's Order of March twelfth. And we have already confirmed that all of the counselors are, that are here can hear us and we can hear them. So I'm going to call this public forum to order at six oh one on June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. The purpose of a public forum is to hear from the public. And we have not tried this with the Zoom aspect or Zoom possibilities. And so let me just explain that in addition to, um, having a public forum, we are going to have just a brief recap in case somebody hasn't joined us of the information session. But fifty percent of the time has to be for the public. And, um, we are going to try something that if a person from the public would like to speak, ask a question, uh, make a comment, you raise your hand and we are actually going to invite you in temporarily as a panelist and it'll be your choice as to whether or not you would like to be seen uh, through video or whether you're just going to have your name up there. Uh, we want to make sure before you bring you in that you unmute and you tell us your name and where you live. So before we get started on the actual public comment period, uh, I just want to ask Sean to make a very brief presentation that just summarizes what we just looked at. And you're doing your own screens, right Sean?
Yep, I'll bring it up right now. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Um, so again, we're talking about the capital improvement program for FY twenty-one. For FY twenty-one, um, there are sort of three buckets of, um, capital funding that we uh, allocate projects from. The first is cash capital and that is based on the tax levy. And for this year, we're proposing five hundred and thirty thousand from roads, a hundred and seventy thou, a hundred and seventy thousand for sidewalks for a total of seven hundred thousand dollars between the two. And then the rest of the cash capital funds, uh, would be used, would go into a capital reserve account and that capital reserve account would be used to address any urgent needs that arise between July one and the fall. Um, and the reason that's the case between the falls is because we plan to reconvene JCPC in the fall and reevaluate, um, the capital plan at that point based on whatever the economic situation, situation is at the time. The other two funding sources for capital this year are, uh, potentially state aid. Um, chapter ninety money, we budgeted a hundred and eighty forty, eight hundred, eight hundred and forty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. Um, but that is dependent on whether the state actually approves, um, an allocation and how much they approve. And then the remainder is from, uh, Uber money for downtown improvements and that's sixty-two thousand dollars. All of these projects or these funding sources are summarized into this chart. Um, the top half of this chart is the funding side of capital improvement plan and the, the bottom half of this chart is the expenditure side. Um, so for FY twenty-one, the total that we're proposing or total funds available is three million, six hundred and eighty-seven thousand, nine thirty-four, which is comprised of the cash capital, the other and the state aid. And down below you'll see how those, those funds that are available are being allocated. So cash capital, um, in addition to those projects that were just mentioned on the previous slides, it's also used to pay whatever debt has been approved in prior years. And so, um, cash capital goes towards the actual debt, projected debt, and then all those projects that were just identified. Um, and then below that we use the others, the Uber money, which is going for downtown improvements. And then below that is the state aid, um, the chapter ninety funds that are going for roads and sidewalks. Um, so all the funds that are available for FY twenty-one are being allocated. And then FY twenty-two and beyond, um, that's how the plan was left back in March. It hasn't been updated uh, to reflect the new reality of what, what's happened after COVID nineteen. And that's something that will be updated, um, for the fall as well. And that's it. I will turn it back for questions.
Thank you, Sean. So actually at this point, uh, Serge, who is helping us this evening, uh, Sean, I'm going to have you take down the, uh, things so that we can all see each other. And I'm going to ask among the attendees, first of all, let me restate, if you would like to connect to this meeting by Zoom, you can do so using the, the, um, Zoom connect on the town website for this meeting. It also appears at the bottom of this agenda. If you are joining by phone, then you need to do a, uh, asterix nine in order to be able to ask a question. If you are joining by Zoom, you just need to raise your hand. So is there anybody among the attendees who at this time would like to ask a question or make a comment? I see some, one person, could you please identify yourself? It's EAO. Athena, we need to unmute the person.
Hi, my name is Evan O'Neil and I live at six Smith Street in Amherst.
Thank you. Would you like to be seen, uh, in, in the video or just stay as EAO?
Whatever works, either way is fine.
Well, you have to make yourself
Oh, I do.
Through the video if you want to, or if not, just go ahead and make your statement.
Uh, I think I'll just make my statements easier that way.
Okay.
I just wanted to, um, I wrote a letter to the town council, I think earlier in June requesting, um, uh, sidewalk funding. Um, and I just wanted to, um, to say I attended the, um, the special town council meeting about a half an hour ago and I was just happy to hear that there's really sounds to be, sounds like there's an emphasis on sidewalk funding. And I just wanted to give a specific shout out that, um, in my letter, um, we live right in downtown and, uh, we're on a very small street, but a very heavily trafficked street, both by cars and pedestrian traffic. And I think it's really important that this street has a sidewalk. And there's also part of Kellogg Avenue that doesn't have a sidewalk and it's actually, I think, the most, um, dangerous part of the, of the street. That's kind of the windy part. And I specifically asked the council, um, in the town to look at this and see if you could provide, you know, funding for a new sidewalk in these, on these streets. So that was my specific shout out for, um, uh, new, new sidewalks. I just wanted to say thank you for, um, making sidewalks a priority. I think it's really important, um, despite the problems I know the town's going to face in the future with funding, but, um, I think for pedestrian safety is just very important and, um, thank you for that.
Okay. Is there anything else that, uh, anybody that wants to respond to that comment? I don't know that there was a specific question, but we thank you for your comment. We're now going to put you back into the attendee area, but if you'd like to ask a question or make another statement, you can raise your hand again. Uh, Tony Cunningham, we're going to bring you in as a temporary panelist. You'd like to be seen, please make your video available. So Serge, you need to bring her in. Okay. Hope we haven't lost her.
Yeah, I added her as a panelist, so she should be joining us.
It doesn't take a little while?
Uh, it could take a few seconds.
Okay. We're trying something new because several people have expressed interest in seeing our speakers and seeing who is attending. We're not seeing Tony. There she is. Tony, if you'd like to unmute and also, uh, be seen, you can also show your video or just make your statement.
I'm sorry, uh, this is Tony Cunningham. I got cut off there. Is it my turn?
Yes, it is. And
Oh, great. Thank you.
We're now showing as a panelist on a temporary basis. And if you'd like to show your video, you may and be live with us, or you can just leave it the way it is. Okay, there you are, Tony.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I just wanted to, um, thank the finance committee and the JCPC that have been pushing lately for the, uh, reports of unspent capital. Um, I think that's a vital piece of information when you try to determine how to allocate limited resources. And so I just wanted to thank, uh, the members of JCPC and Finance Committee for asking for their information and Sonia and Sean for providing it and, um, Doug Slaughter also. And I'm glad to see that will be part of the process going forward.
Any other comments at this time, Tony?
That's it for now. Thank you.
Well, thank you. We're going to have you go back in as an attendee. We hope we don't lose you in the process. And you may come back at some other time. Are there other comments or questions from, or statements from the attendees? We have plenty of time. Yes, Ludmila Havlova Gilham, and you can tell me I pronounced it incorrectly later. Um, please come into the, uh, comment area and you can both unmute and also, um, make sure we can see you. There is a bit of a time lag. Didn't realize there would be this much time lag.
Yes, she should be joining us just shortly.
Okay. Can you track the progress of that surge?
Um, let me take a look and see, uh, what I can tell on my end here.
This is, we can all see the attendees, it, they disappear when
Right.
They're like in this transition limbo.
So yeah, so what happens is the person, essentially the system, uh, exits the person out as an attendee and then they are rejoined as a panelist. Uh, we, in our experience, um, it worked pretty quickly, but it seems like there's a delay, uh, when there's a lot of attendees or in this situation.
Okay. We'll keep waiting for her and make sure that when she comes into the panelist area that we let her know it's her turn. Meantime, will there be other people who would like to make public comment? Okay, we're going to still wait on her. We have no other pub, public comment at this time.
Okay, I was just texted by Tony that when we transferred her, she was cut off and then she had to re-log in with the Zoom number again to get back into the meeting.
Oh boy. Okay, thank you, uh, Tony for letting us know how that happened. So Ludmila, if you can hear us, please log back in.
Uh, that's, that's very helpful. I think, I think before we transition folks, we, I, I think it'd be good for them to know that that's the normal, uh, process of re-entering as a panelist.
We have, we're going to continue the meeting anyway, so hopefully Ludmila will, hear us. If anybody, buddy knows how to contact her, please go ahead.
So Lynn, is this a different process from what we used at the, um, TSO meeting today? Because we
We're actually trying out a new process which allows us to at least have those people who are attendees who would like to speak to actually, um, be shown, uh, come in as a panelist and therefore they can be shown, uh, by video as well as speak. Uh, this is because several of you have asked, uh, that we try to come up with a way to be more, if you will, a neighborhood, if you will, or a meeting. And, uh, so Ludmila has come back into the room.
Oh, here we go.
We'd like to see if we can successfully transfer her, Serge.
Hi.
There we are.
I apologize. Um, I don't know whether I did something over there. You did, it doesn't really matter. Um, I wanted to ask, what is our borrowing capacity? And how far are we along the process? I'm sorry if it's out of sync with some of the other things you may have been discussing.
No, I think under capital, that's perfectly decent question. Uh, Sean or Paul?
Um, I don't know the exact number offhand. We can get you that number. It's pretty high. I think last time I looked at it was in a hundred million dollar range. Um, but we'll, we'll have to come back with the exact number. It's a certain percentage of the, I think of the taxable property in town.
You may have more of a detail on that if you'd like.
So it's about, last I, I looked, it was about a hundred and thirteen million.
Okay, and I guess my question is actually in concert with some of the other capital projects that we are looking at in terms of planning. I have not, I'm not very astute in terms of being able to look up meeting information and, um, follow the conversation in town really. So, um, I'm sorry if I'm asking these questions out of place almost, but I, I was thinking that we do have a number of projects that are in planning stages. And I was wondering if you had thought about, uh, how we might orchestrate, um, being able to actually borrow in order to complete them. The ones that I'm particularly interested is the Jones Library and the elementary school. And how we might be able to permit ourselves to actually engage in those projects all, all the way through.
Ludmila, let me start and then I'm going to ask Paul and Sonia and Sean or other counselors to chime in. Um, we did begin, uh, a very serious process of listening back in December for all four of the major capital projects, which are in fact the library, uh, the, yeah, and, and elementary school, a li, um, fire station, any EMS station combined, and also the Department of Public Works. Uh, we were proceeding along those lines and then as with so many other things, COVID has interrupted. However, um, back in December, we were accepted by the Mass School of Business Authority in school, school building authority, excuse me, into their process for planning for a new elementary school. And that process is beginning as we speak. And, uh, will take about a year and a half to two years to come up with the, uh, curriculum plan as well as begin to get started on the building plans. And then in the process, um, if those are all acceptable to the, um, MSBA, then they will proceed with giving us some amount of money that will match what we will put in locally. Uh, that is subject to the approval of the town council. And should we choose, I said should, I didn't say we will. Should we choose to go out under override, we would. Uh, so that one is grant dependent. Um, the second one of, that you mentioned is the Jones Library, which is also grant dependent. And frankly, we don't know where things are with that one at this point. And the reason we don't know where things are with that one is because we don't is because we don't know whether or not the Library Commission, the state level Library Commission, will have the money to give any capital grants this year for capital improvement. And if they do, whether they will extend the timeline for that one. And again, unlike the Fire Station DPW, those two are grant dependent, but the Fire Station and the DPW are not. The Fire Station is, best location is still considered to be where DPW is, but we have still not found a suitable location to move DPW to. And so those two projects are further down on the list. And the issue is not just borrowing capacity, but making sure that we're in sync with what the residents of Amherst are thinking about as well as our ability to pay back all of the loans. So with that, therefore, the council, by the way, has not really returned to this discussion. I do want to ask others if they'd like to add to this conversation at this time. Kathy, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to what Lynn just said, Ludmilla, that the debt capacity is one number. The other one we're looking at, or we will have to look at, are some numbers Sean put up on how much money can we allocate each year to capital to pay back loans. So we have some past debt. And going forward, if we have enough of an economic recovery to go back anywhere near to 10% of our general property, and we'll have more for capital in general, and that means more. So the timing of these matters for not just borrowing the money, but then being able to pay the annual amount back each year. So it's all intermingled with what he said about fiscal year '22 through '25. And those are the years that particularly apply to the school and the library in terms of their grant cycles. So we're going to have to be looking at both of those, not just the ability to borrow it, but the ability to pay it back.
Paul or Sean or Sonya, any additional?
No, I think you nailed it. Lynn and Kathy, I appreciate you mentioning that. I think it's something that we've clearly been focused on. One of the challenges has been the financing of all four projects, both on the ability for us to take on the debt, but also for the taxpayers to take on the payments that are required to do all four projects. And you know, the metrics we're dealing with is the length of time that we do them. We are driven by the grant cycle. And so we are, any, the two programs, the library and schools, have the ability to obtain grants. The other two projects are, do not have that capacity to get grants.
I want to make sure that we give people who are in the audience an opportunity to ask questions or make statements before I go back to our counselors. Are there other people who would like to make a comment? Okay, Dorothy, you have your hand up. Please unmute.
Yes, I would like to ask something that so many people have asked me. Let's assume that we do, that the MS, that the school grant is going forward. Will we be able to also go forward with the Jones Library? Should that money be there? I mean, everyone, this is what they ask me all the time. And I can't answer it. It's way above my pay grade. So I'd like to know from Sean whether, how that looks, given our temporary budget.
You know, Dorothy, I'd love to get out my crystal ball. Hey, this is a council decision. It's not an issue, it is an issue of what we have in terms of debt, ability to borrow and ability to pay back. But the decision to move forward on either of those projects is a council decision or a decision that the council can decide to take to the public.
That's correct, but I don't have any, if it's, if we're told it depends upon our ability to pay back, you know, do we have any knowledge of that?
I'm going to see if Sean or Paul or Sonya would like to jump into that one.
I'll just, I mean, so when we looked at things before COVID, you know, there was some ability to do all four projects. It's just, it's all about allocating resources and how many resources you want to allocate to different projects. And if you do that, then you have to make decisions on other priorities. So post-COVID, it's a little bit of a different story, at least in the short term. The amount of money that we have for capital is, you know, half of what it was last year at this time. So over the next couple of years, and we're doing the economic recovery, some of those models that we looked at before COVID happened are not going to be the same picture. So it's something that we're going to have to look at again with our new reality, at least while we're recovering economically.
Okay, and Dorothy, you know from our conversations in finance that, you know, our hotel and food and restaurant revenues are down. Our parking revenues are down. And so a lot's going to depend on the economic recovery and how strong it is and how fast it happens.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions from our attendees? First of all, we're glad to see so many of you, but, and we appreciate the questions and comments that people have made. We certainly would like to hear from more of you. And we are going to end this at 6:30 unless there's more comments and go on to our regular council meeting. But I do want to urge you that at any time, should you care to share with us various comments, write us at towncouncil@amherstma.gov. Okay? Any other comments from the audience? And I also want to thank those people who joined us tonight for their patience in being brought in as panelists so we could be seen. And so you could be seen and we could hear from you directly. Okay, so given that, I'm going to adjourn this portion of our meeting. We will re-adjourn and we will come back to call to order in at 6:30. So don't go far, gang. And we'll begin our regular council meeting at that time.
Lynn, is this also same Zoom? So we just-
Same Zoom. Do not, do not disconnect. It is same Zoom. Thank you. It's our third meeting tonight using the same Zoom. And let me just begin by saying, under Governor Baker's March 12th order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, C Chapter 30A, Paragraph 20, allows us to hold this virtual Town Council meeting. I'm going to call on each of the counselors and make sure again that you can hear me or still hear me, and we can still hear you. And then we're going to call the meeting to order and review the order of the agenda. Okay, so we're going to start with Shalony Balneum.
Present.
Alissa Brewer.
Oops. Present. I'm having a little trouble with my internet connection, so I keep turning off my camera.
Okay. Patty Angeles.
Here, present.
Darcy Dumont.
Present.
Lynn Griesmer is present. Mandy Jo Hanke.
Present.
Dorothy Pam.
Present.
Evan Ross.
Present.
George Ryan.
Present.
Kathy Shane.
Present.
Steve Schreiber.
Present.
Andy Steinberg.
Present.
And Sarah Schwartz.
Present.
All 13 of us are here and can be heard and we can hear you. So we will begin with the announcements. And Serge, you're just going to show them on the screen. I'm not going to go through them except to add two small items. One is to congratulate Jack Jemsek, who is a member of the Planning Board. He has been elected to the Executive Committee of the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. And this is the first time we've had somebody on that executive committee in a long time. So thank you for taking that on. We also want to urge you to check the town website for the Juneteenth celebration, which is this Friday, July 19. And we're going to move on then and see if we have any public comment at this time. So if you would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand. And we'll try to bring you into the room. And again, but we have a little difficulty doing this in the last part of this meeting. Is there any public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, then let me just review the order of the agenda. Because what we've tried to do is have those items that require outside our staff to be with us in the beginning of the meeting, so we don't tie up their entire meeting. So our first presentation is actually going to be 7C, which is the water and sewer rates. This then appears on the consent agenda where we will just vote to refer it to the Finance Committee. But rather than just refer, we wanted to make sure there was a brief presentation. And I know that we have the Superintendent of Public Works and the Assistant Superintendent of Public Works with us tonight. After we get done with that, we are going on to the consent agenda. And then after that, the proclamations. And then rather than do the rest of the presentations now, because they are all really internal to the council, although certainly the public is more than welcome to watch, we are going to do the action items and literally just go straight down the list. Then we'll come back to the presentations, which include the Town Manager Evaluation, the Zoning Bylaw Amendment, and the Pleasing Discussion in Amherst, and then appointments and the rest of the agenda. So if we can begin by having Guilford Maureen and Amy Rusick and the Town Manager, and also the slides that pertain to the water and sewer rates.
Lynn, there's a hand up in the audience.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, hold on. I don't want to start if we have a public comment. Yes, could you please identify your one?
Yeah. This is Amy Zuckerman. The page went blank. So I just want to talk briefly about, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Amy.
Again, my phone. Here's what happened. Just you know, the place was blank. I could see you. I've got something pretty exciting happening in this town, which I'm working with a number of businesses, Target Town Council. Lou, have your inbox about promoting many authors and our books and visits to the actual royal family. These include Emily Dickinson, Eric Carl, My Books, Jamie Owen, et cetera. Because right now, the royal children are learning all about literature and everything, all about foreign languages. And I think it's about towns that this time, town, joins them and have our books in this town promoted. As they're on Zoom all the time. Also, I'm sorry, it's all echo, Lynn. I sent you this information by email into Town Council today. So something discussed, and we want something positive in the entire town. So we've got wonderful literary figures, including Wrigley Catagor and Scapordu. Could you hear me?
We could, and we did receive your email.
Okay, there's another, one more very positive thing is that I'm working with developers on what's called the R and B renovation. That's 74 acres, devoted to biocience, and much to be regarded for that. But one thing, can we please drive up for the phones? It's going to be ending close to the radio. This is terrible.
Amy, you're very, you're creating a very serious echo.
I know. What's happening, let me turn my phone off.
Amy, if you're, you're now in the room, if you'd like to unmute, you have about another minute, please. I don't know what the connection problem is, but Amy, what we're going to do is encourage that you, we know we did receive several emails from you today, and they did go to all the council. Are there any other attendees that would like to make comment at this time? Okay, then I'm going to go back to our presentation, and this is on the water and sewer rates. So Serge, we're going to go ahead. Can you make the picture bigger?
No. Now you can see me. I appear to be talking, Lynn, and I shut this off. There was a problem with technical problems we'll discuss later.
Yes, so Amy, we needed, we did just on with the rest of our meeting.
I'm going to turn, there is a real serious problem with technical. I'm turning you off. Good night. We'll talk later. Okay?
Thank you. Yes.
Yeah.
Is this, is this better, Lynn, or do you want me to try to zoom?
What we're seeing on the screen is all of rounding things around the presentation. And-
Okay, let me see if I can hide that. This is just all the documents that will be coming up. So I'm just going to see if I can open this separately. Is that better?
That's better. Yes.
Perfect.
So Paul, would you like to introduce this?
Yeah, so thank you. Thank you, Lynn. Every year, we do a meeting to talk about water and sewer rates. The council is the Board of Water Commissioners and Board of Sewer Commissioners. And it's your responsibility to set the water and sewer rates. And this is what we're doing today. And this is your first look at it, basically. I think typically what happens is this will get referred to the Finance Committee and then come back to you in two weeks. So people have a chance to digest it. These are water and sewer rates that will be implemented on July 1. And I just want to note, the way we'll work this is that Sean will go through a few slides. And then Guilford Maureen, who is the Superintendent of Public Works, and Amy Rusicki, who is the Assistant Superintendent of Public Works, are both here to ask, answer any kinds of questions that you may have. Just, but before we start, this, you will be seeing a significant percentage increase in water and sewer rates. But I do want to note that our water and sewer rates are some of the lowest in the area. And we're about $400 a year below the state average. So we have very competitive water and sewer rates. And we'll go through why, but they will need to be increased this year for a number of reasons. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Sean, if you're ready for that.
Yep. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Um, so, and the other thing I'll just note is that the water and sewer rate conversation is heavily entwined with the enterprise funds as we look at those going forward. So there'll be a lot more conversation on enterprise funds as we dig into the budget.
And Sean, before you start, I do want to confirm that there will be a vote later as part of the consent agenda to refer this to the Finance Committee.
Yep.
Thank you.
Serge, can you go to the next slide, please? So, yeah, that's perfect. So the proposed FY '21 rates, so for FY '21, the water is being proposed to go to $420 per 100 cubic feet, which is an increase of 30 cents from FY '20, or 7.7%. And the sewer rate is proposed to be $460 per 100 cubic feet. And that's an increase of 60 cents from FY '20, or 15%. And as Paul noted, they're sizable increases, but we're going to go through the financials of the enterprise funds in a second. And you'll see a couple of the reasons why. This chart just shows the history of our water and sewer rates. The solid lines are actual, or what was budget for FY '20. And the dotted is sort of the trend going forward of what's needed at the pace of the, of what's needed for the enterprise funds going forward. Next slide, Serge. So there's really three, maybe a couple other ones, but there's three main causes for why the rate is going up. In general, we've seen water consumption decreasing approximately 2% per year over the past several years. We have really good data on consumption that we can look back quite a ways and look at trends. And so over the last four or five years, we've seen it going down about 2% a year. And in general, that's not a bad thing, as we use less water. But it does mean that the enterprise fund can't bill as much. And so there's lower revenues going into- But it does mean that the enterprise fund can't bill as much. And so there's lower revenues going into the enterprise fund. And one thing about enterprise funds is they have a lot of fixed costs, infrastructure costs and things of that nature. And so they can't flex as easily as the, as you might want them to. The second piece is both of the enterprise funds, the water and sewer fund. They both have significant capital improvements coming up, which in order to meet the debt payments, the rates will have to go up to maintain the current level of services and meet those debt payments in the future. Water has a centennial plant, which is FY22 estimated about $11 million. And that's factored into the future rates. And sewer has the gravity belt thickener and the reuse water and FY22, which the sum of those two projects is 7.3 million. And then the third one that really caused sort of a second look at our rates and really was unpredictable is the COVID-19 and the closure of the colleges and university. We've seen a pretty steep drop off in our consumption, not so much in the rest of town, but particularly at the college, college and university meters. And so that's caused our consumption come in a lot lower for FY20, which means we're going to most likely see a revenue gap in FY20 that we're going to have to make up. And then depending on what happens in FY21 in the fall with the colleges, that issue could roll over into the fall. And as I mentioned, the enterprise funds, we'll discuss those in more detail when we talk about the FY21 budget. Next slide, Serge. So this is a comparison of our rates to our neighbors and to the state average. So it's based on 120, I think 100 cubic feet per year usage. And so it's taken the new rate multiplied by 120. And so for water, it's $504 per year and for sewer, it's $552 per year for a total of $1,056. And you can see how that compares to the state median, the state average, and then many of our neighbors nearby. And I think that says, Serge can go to the left side here. And then we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
You're muted, Lynn.
This is an opportunity for counselors to ask questions, remembering that this will be coming to the finance committee actually starting tomorrow. Kathy Shane, you have your hand up.
I, and I am on finance, so I know I get to ask more questions tomorrow. So I just, when, I'm assuming when you come to finance, you'll be able to talk to us about what actually are the operating cost personnel and I have last year's budget. And the extent to which those are fixed when water consumption goes down as opposed to, we can say, looking forward, if we're going to have much lower use, is it less people time? You know, I realize the machines may still, or do we turn off a machine? So it's a question of how fixed are the overhead costs? And we had a, so that's just a comment, but also a question for tomorrow. The second is, how much of the rate increase that's being proposed is looking forward to the centennial plant? Because we were told a year ago that you start to build in some of the anticipated costs, the debt service costs, so that we don't get rate shock. Has any of that been built into it is my question? And then my third, and I real, I know it, it isn't for the coming year. We had a briefing on, particularly on water rates, but that we have an option as a town to talk about setting two-tiered water rates, one for really large consumers. You know, the big colleges or universities versus the residential rate and we could think about doing that. When would be the time we should have that discussion if we wanted to do it? Not this coming year, but a year from now, because I think we said the council will get you some ideas. And then Guilford could give us estimates on what that does to the rate structure. So those are the three on how much is fixed, how much of centennial is built, if anything is built in. And I'm just focused on water right now.
So the, the how much is fixed, yeah, tomorrow when we meet, we'll get into much more detail about the expenditures, both the operating expenditures, the capital expenditures that are proposed, and then also the debt payments. So we will dive into the spreadsheets that support the overall enterprise fund. And in terms of the rates, so what I could tell and Guilford can weigh in on this as well. It did appear as even before COVID-19 happened, the rates were starting to ramp up to where they need to be for when that debt does come online. So it did appear that we were making incremental steps, starting this coming year FY21, to get to where they need to be. But Guilford, you may want to add to the, the nature of some of your costs in the, in the water fund.
I, I'm going to suggest at this time, unless people need the charge that we take, the charge stand surge so we can see each other. Thank you. I believe we were going to ask whether you had other comments on the water and sewer.
So on the, on the water and sewer, the rates we were building in some, we were building in additional costs for both the projects and wastewater and the projects in, in the water apartment, which is centennial. The bigger increases are pretty much based on trying to comment or account for the 2% loss of water we've been seeing over the last three years. And just the fact that we had this problem with COVID and the shutdown of universities. So the bigger, bigger increases is kind of a response to those, those issues and trying to keep the, the enterprise systems profitable. You will see, if you look in the, in the charts of the, what we're spending, we actually did do, the budgets have been reduced by about 2 to 4%, 2 in water and about 4% I think in wastewater. I might, I might have it a little backwards. And, and those are numbers we took out because even though we, we have remaining requirements, which many requirements right now aren't very much affected by the changes in the water production or the wastewater treatment. What is being affected though is because we have one plant offline. We've been taking, we took out some of the electricity costs for that plant, some of the operating costs for that plant because we aren't going to need it. So we reduced some of that cost and reduced a couple of other costs that are basically based on how much water you produce, not how much staffing or how much regulatory compliance you have to meet right now.
Alyssa, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you. Guilford can probably predict what I'm going to say. So there's a slide in there that talks about capital improvements coming up with centennial and gravity belt thickener and reuse water. But we keep hearing about our neighboring communities, in particular North Hampton, having stormwater management investments that they're having to make. And I wonder if we can find out where we are with that and why that's not listed as one of the upcoming capital expenses on that slide.
So the reason we're not listed is we've just joined the stormwater program. We're in our second, second year right now. North Hampton's already been through one cycle of the permit. We're start, just starting out in the permit cycle. We have a lot more leeway to get our house in order and make some decisions about what projects we want to do and about how we want to fund it. So when you hear other communities talk about what they're doing for stormwater, we're five to six years behind them because our permit wasn't given to us until two years ago. So that's why those aren't listed in the budget right now. They are coming.
Mandy Jo, thank you. Mandy Jo Hanke.
I think this has been answered, but I just want to make sure I'm clear on this. The rates that are being proposed have accounted for the decrease in use that we expect because of de-densification of the higher ed institutions.
And that's correct. The, the rates are actually pretty conservative for that. If the universities come back stronger, university and colleges all come back stronger. We, it would be very, we'd be better off, but the rates do take into account that they're not coming back 100%.
Thank you.
Are there other questions from the council at this time? Yes, Dorothy.
Okay, I just want to backtrack a little bit. And so we have not been part of a stormwater management, but I'm sure we've had stormwater and you've managed it. But so there's some new group or some new grant system. I'm, I don't really think I know anything about this. I, I, sounds interesting, but what did we do before? Why did we join a new group and how's it going to be different?
In the past, we helped, we took care of stormwater issues as they came up. It may, basically it was just fixing pipes. What, what's happened is the federal government says you now must look at water quality in your pipes, not just your pipes. So the federal government has decided we should join this because the federal government thought it'd be a great thing for us to come. Do, it's a nice party we should come to. So that's what's going on. So the bigger issue that's going to come up is not just fixing infrastructure or pipes. It's going to be how to improve water quality and make things better for the animals and for the people who use and have, live in the water.
Are there any other questions from the council at this time? Okay, I just want to remind you that this will be on the consent agenda. And we will not have another presentation later. So Darcy. Darcy, you need to unmute.
Yes, sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I just wanted to mention that the municipal vulnerability preparedness grant is presumably going to be providing funding for stormwater system improvements at some point. After they're identified as needs. Do you see that as in the plans, Guilford?
The, the goal is, is once we get a definitive plan on what we're going to need to do and where we want to go first with our stormwater plan, we will be applying for just about every grant that we can find. There's several, the Culvert replacement grant is also another very good grant we can use to improve stormwater quality. And some other, there's some other ones in that same realm that we would use as well. So there's actually several grants out there that can be used for this as well.
Are there any other questions of the council? Okay. I, I just want to remind attendees that we aren't having public comment on each of these. But if you would like to make public comment, the council, the finance committee of the council is meeting tomorrow at 2:30 and the council itself will be taking this back up again on June 29th at our regular meeting. Are there any other questions from the council? Okay, then we are going to go on to the consent agenda. I want to just take a little time going through the consent agenda and making sure that if there are counselors who would like items to remove, remove, they let me know. But let me go through it completely to begin with. So the following items were selected because they were considered to be routine and it was reasonable to expect they would pass with no controversy. To remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion later in the meeting, ask that it be removed when the president lists the consent agenda items. The request to remove an item from the consent agenda does not require a second. So the motion for the consent agenda is to move the following items and the printed motions thereunder and approve these items as a single unit. The first one is the adoption of the pollinator protection resolution. The second is the suspension of town council rules and procedures. Rule 8.4 for the following agenda items. It's 8C and all this does is allow us to act on them tonight. It does not mean we've approved them. Okay, 8E is the approval of community preservation act committee recommendations. 8F is the extension of the deadline to adopt FY21 budget in accordance with charter section 5.9. And 8G is to authorize the president to sign a letter to the zoning board of appeals regarding Valley CDC's project at 132 North Hampton Road. 8B is referral of the water and sewer rates to the finance committee. 8C is referral of capital improvement program to the finance committee. 8E is approval of community preservation act committee recommendations. 8F is the extension of deadline to adopt FY21 budgets in accordance with chapter, section, charter section 5.9. 8G is authorization of the president to actually sign the letter. In that case, that would be the approval of the letter. And then there is 11A to D, which is the approval of minutes. I see three hands. Mandy Jo, please tell me which item you are speaking to.
I would like to remove item 8G, the authorization of the president to sign the letter to the ZBA. I'm not, to be clear, I'm not asking to remove the suspension of the rules for that authorization, but the actual authorization.
Thank you. Um, is there anything else?
Not that I'm asking to remove, no.
Yeah, Darcy.
I'm asking to remove the two references to 8E, the suspension of the town rules of procedure. Rule 8.4 and the later approval of community preservation act recommendation. So there's two of them.
Asking that we remove the one where we suspend the rules under 8.4 and also the approval of the actual recommendations, 8E.
Yes.
Correct. Okay. Pat DeAngelis. Pat, you've taken your.
Yes, yes.
Pat, you're.
Yeah, I think I finally unmuted.
Yes, you did. Yeah.
Both of those things I, one of them I wanted to have removed and Mandy Jo took care of that. I have a question on the capital, the CPA committee recommendations. Does it include the money for the library?
No, it does not.
Okay, then I, okay, fine. Thank you.
But it's being removed anyway from the consent agenda.
Yes, yeah, but I just still wanted the answer to that question. Thank you.
Certainly. All right. So I'm going to make a motion and then look for a second. I move to, to move the following items and the printed motions thereunder and approve those items as a single unit. 6A, the adoption of the pollinator protection resolution. The next item is the suspension of town council rules of procedure. Rule 8.4 for the following agenda items. Please note, we are skipping 8E. We are going to 8F, the extension of deadline to adopt FY21 budget in accordance with charter section 5.9. And 8G is the authorization of the president to sign a letter to zoning board of appeals regarding Valley CDC project at 132 North Hampton Road. Again, that only allows you to act tonight. It does not approve the letter. 8B is referral of water and sewer rates to the finance committee. 8C, improvement program to finance committee. 8E is approval of community preservation. Oh, I'm sorry, we're taking 8E off. 8F is the extension of deadlines to adopt FY21 budget in accordance with charter section 5.9. And 11A to D is the approval of minutes and the meetings, particularly that those referred to are May 4, May 18, May 1 and June 8. Is there a second?
Second, Mandy.
Mandy Jo seconds that. Is there any further question or discussion? Hearing none, then we will move to roll call vote. And I will begin with Alyssa Brewer.
Hi.
Pat DeAngelis.
Hi.
Darcy Demont.
Hi.
Reese Murray's eye. Hanke.
Hi.
Pam.
Hi.
Evan Ross.
Hi.
George Ryan.
Hi.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Hi.
Andy Steinberg.
Hi.
Sarah Schwartz.
Hi.
Shalony Baumel.
Yes.
Okay. Then, thank you for that. So we are going on to, we actually have done the resolution and we want to thank John Root for, for bringing this to us. We want to thank the. We want to thank, uh, the co-sponsor who's Darcy. And I do want to mention, I should have said this earlier, that CRC did review it and stated that it was ready for our review. Okay, we're going to skip over the other presentations and we're moving to the action items. First one is the temporary zoning amendment, article 14. And we, um, this, this is the article that has, was brought to us by the town manager and his staff. Um, it has been reviewed by a number of different bodies. TSO reviewed it for the purposes of looking at the public way. And then CRC reviewed it and also reviewed it in a joint hearing with the planning board. And, uh, then it has coming, is coming back to us as a council. And, um, there are several items related to this. Um, and I'm going to be calling on Mandy Jo and George as we go through. And eventually, hopefully, a motion. So, the first is the emergency preamble Charter section 210B.
Do you want me to start with that, Lynn?
Please do.
Okay, so, there's a preamble that if we want to adopt a measure under the emergency procedures, and this generally under Charter section 2.10B relates to bylaw amendments, because bylaws under the charter are required to be read twice. And Charter section 210B says if you want to adopt it as an, an emergency measure, you can forego two readings of a bylaw and do so and adopt it and have it also effective immediately or in less than 14 days, um, if you adopt a preamble stating the emergency. And it needs to declare and define the emergency and it has to be separately voted on by seven members uh, with a passage of seven counselors. So, there is that, that motion, I, I will read at some point when, when we're ready to read it. But I took the language pretty much from the preamble of the temporary zoning bylaw itself. Um, and also then added the, the Charter sections and, and what it, why we need it as an emergency, because delaying this action would not serve the purpose of what we're trying to do with the zoning bylaw.
Okay, are there questions regarding the first part of this? And let me just mention the first part of this, which is, um, as Mandy Jo explained, the exception with the charter requires a majority vote of council. Are there questions? Okay, then, um, Mandy Jo, do you want to please make the motion? I'm sorry?
Darcy has her hand up.
Oh, Darcy, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I guess I'm, I'm just sort of surprised to see this emergency preamble show up at this point in the process. And although I do see the major part of this as an emergency, I don't see the part of it about opening new businesses as an emergency. So, I'll probably vote against it because of that. It, just because it doesn't strike me that we should, um, use emergency as a cover for opening new businesses.
Okay, Kathy Shane, you have your hand up.
It, it's more of a comment because I asked a clarifying question earlier today that voting this is just to be able to declare this under emergency rules. It, when we turn to voting on the actual proposed zoning bylaw change, we will be back to the regular two-thirds vote. So, we're, it's a separate consideration. So, um, I had asked that and Mandy had confirmed that because I was trying to read it to understand what the implications were. So, that I'm correct.
Yeah, yes, you are. Are there other questions or comments from the council? Chalene?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to address the concern why this opening of new businesses is concerned, uh, is considered an emergency. And we had a robust discussion about this several times. And what we're hearing from the local businesses, from, uh, the business improvement district, the chamber, is that many businesses are not going to be able to reopen. And they're going to be a lot of empty, uh, places downtown. So, what we want to do is make it easy for maybe other businesses, pop-up stores, um, other opportunities for people to fill in those spaces. Or we're going to be left with a lot of empty spaces. And the other thing is that the neighboring towns are making similar, uh, providing similar, uh, provisions to businesses. So, we will be then losing some of the new businesses that might want to open in Amherst and go off to the other towns because we're not providing the same ease in opening. And of course, we've already vetted the, who this is going to apply to and what, uh, how it's going to be vetted by the local town staff and how the experience is going to be used in making sure that the businesses are still, um, are still, um, couldn't, uh, I don't know how to say this, they're still complying with what is necessary. So, even though we're expediting it, it doesn't mean we're letting them do whatever they want. It's just that we are not going to take 70 days to do it and we're going to rely on the staff and the experience, which they have confirmed they have enough of and we know to make sure that they're doing this in an expeditious manner.
Darcy, you have your hand up.
Yes, I understand the arguments for doing it, but I also feel that it's, um, giving away too much of the oversight that we normally have done to use an emergency to bring in new people, new business, perhaps not known. Uh, you could have a, an occurrence as we did with, um, I forget the name of the, the bar, the bar that went crazy, you know, Port, Porto. Um, and I think we discussed this before and we said, could there be some, um, review or analysis after the fact? I mean, I can understand wanting to get things going and opening, but when we, several of us asked for, um, the ability to examine, reexamine, maybe change some conditions, I, I don't think that was accepted. So, um, I, I know generally it's not good to buy a pig in a poke. So, that's kind of why I'm having a little problem with this.
Are there any other comments from the council? All right, then, uh, I'm looking for a motion. Mandy Jo?
I'll make the emergency preamble motion. So, motion. Whereas the requirements of Charter section 210A regarding bylaws, including 14-day publication on the town bulletin board, readings at two separate meetings and an effective date no earlier than 14 days after adoption, would tend to defeat the purpose of the zoning bylaw, article 14 temporary zoning, which is to encourage and facilitate the reopening of existing businesses and the opening of new businesses and to stimulate economic activity in the aftermath of the COVID-19 emergency. Therefore, zoning by law, article 14 temporary zoning is hereby declared to be an emergency measure under Charter section 210B.
Is there a second? I, who, I want to know who seconded.
Say, me, second?
Okay, Dana, do you have that?
Yes, I have, Sarah, thank you.
Thank you, okay. Um, is there any other conversation? Then we go to a roll call vote and, uh, we begin this one with Pat DeAngelis.
Yes.
Darcy Dumont.
No.
Reese Merz is a yes. Hanke.
Yes.
Dorothy Pam.
Abstain.
Evan Ross.
Yes.
George Ryan.
Yes.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Sarah Schwartz.
Yes.
Chalene Ballmum.
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer.
Yes.
Vote is 11, 1, 1, 11, 4, 1 opposed, 1 abstention, no one absent. Uh, we're going to move on then to, um, the fact that this is, this is, I, I need to explain this, that this is the first reading for zoning bylaw 14. We, we will do a second reading in two weeks. The first reading is what allows us to keep moving forward, but we need to do the second one because normally the zoning by law would only take us out for 61 days. And the second reading will allow us to go to the 480 days as recommended. Mandy Jo, did I get that correct?
Um, pretty much, yeah. So, if we adopt this under the emergency measures under 210B, it stands repealed on the 61st day, no matter what. It could repeat, be repealed earlier. And so, we have to also go through adopting this under the normal process. So, it is already posted on the bulletin board for the 14 days. It will come back for a second reading, um, on the 29th. And, and so that, and then it would become effective under the permanence sort of basis that then has that sunsetting clause of 180 days. It would become effective 14 days after the 29th if we pass it on the 29th. It's just sort of the bootstrapping of the emergency and continuing it on to make sure it, it stays effective for the 480 days, as Lynn said.
Okay, okay, with that, uh, I'm going to then ask for Mandy Jo, the community resources, community committee report.
Yes, so, the CRC and, and to go on, it's the first reading under 210A, but this is also allows us, the motion we just passed allows us to vote under 210B to make it effective. Um, the, the motion would have it effective tomorrow. So, on May 19th, CRC discussed this proposal before it went to a hearing. And on June 10th, CRC and the planning board held a joint public hearing as required under MGL chapter 40A for this zoning by law proposal. Both, members of both committees were allowed to ask questions. The public was allowed to, uh, ask questions and make comments. Um, at the end of that meeting, the planning board voted seven to zero unanimously, um, to support, um, to recommend the passage of this zoning by law. That report was added to your packet today. Um, and after the planning board voted unanimously, then the town, the CRC members voted unanimously to recommend the council enact zoning article 14, um, both as an emergency measure and as a regular measure to go through that two-step process. Uh, the things that were expressed the most about this were, um, there were concerns, as Dorothy had indicated, um, about the, the actual, um, granting of a land use permit, um, that, that could be permanent um, without having an opportunity for individuals and neighbors and abutters to actually comment on the application. Uh, the building inspector, Rob Moore, was able to answer questions about what would happen um, if, say, a land use permit was granted for outdoor dining, um, and noise became a problem. Uh, there is a review process for that, um, and he was able to explain what that is. And, and the, the main concern, and that was the main concern about the bylaw as proposed. Um, the, the members indicated the need for this to help economic development in this time of need to shorten that timeframe for land use permits from that 70 days down to 10. Um, we have a very short summer window for businesses to be able to operate as the governor lists, lists some of the restrictions and 70 days would take us through that summer window. And so, that was recognized by committee members of both committees during the hearing. And, and, and I think that, that takes care of my report from CRC on this matter.
What was the vote at CRC?
CRC was unanimous, as well as the planning board being unanimous in support, well, in recommending adoption.
Okay, thank you. Uh, GOL, George.
GOL met on June 3 and, uh, voted unanimously to declare the bylaw, to be clear, consistent and actionable.
And are there any further questions or discussion? Okay, if not, we're then going to move to the actual vote. And this requires a two-thirds majority, which is nine, counselor, I'm sorry, Kathy Shane, you have your hand up.
Sorry, it, um, the raise my hand button was not raising my hand, so I waved it.
Okay, sorry, I now see it, but, yeah, go ahead, please.
Um, I, I just have a question on what happens after the 180 days? So, someone zips through, new or old, and, um, does everything come back for review on what we just approved? You know, I, I don't want to treat new versus old differently. I want them, you know, not to say new gets forever and old has to go through. So, is there, um, a way of collecting information over those 180 days? Did we move too fast on saying yes to certain things? And so, at the end of 180 days, we review some specifics? Or does this group that came under the 180 days, they just keep going, um, whatever happened? And then we go back to normal? So, I just want to know what happens at the end of 180? Because I listened to the planning board discussion and one member has suggested putting in wording that says the permissions will expire in 180 days. And there was a discussion, I'm not wanting to put that into the actual change, you know, not an automatic expiration. So, I'm, do we have, um, even if it's informal, it's a verbal assurance, a way of, it worked pretty well and, and I guess part of my, it worked pretty well. Maybe we should revisit why it normally takes one 70 days, you know? So, can we be looking at some processes to say, could the new normal be a little shorter? You know, on, um, what, what used to take so long? So, I don't mean just, should we pull away from what we agreed? But I just, I'm totally for this idea and I just want to, um, have some way to the town to go back at the end of those 180 days and say, what did we do and how did we like it? And were there any concerns or there anything we can learn from it?
Okay, Mr. Bachman, I'm going to ask you, and I know we have Rob Moore and Chris Brestrop in the room. And I know that Dave Zomak is in the attendees, so.
Yes, so, thank you, thank you, Lynn. So, yeah, first I want to credit, um, our building commissioner, Rob Moore, and planning director, Chris Brestrop, for coming up with this idea and moving it forward, uh, to the specific of your question. Kathy, I think Rob is probably in the best position to answer that.
Rob, please go ahead.
Rob, yep, Rob Moore, um, so, a couple of things. First of all, uh, two things could happen with these approvals, administrative approvals. Some of them could expire, some of them could run out seasonally or at the end of the year or at the end of this 180 days. However, some of them could be more permanent. An example that, uh, you know, in the conversations I'm having over the past week and a half, two weeks, helping to get some of these restaurants open with some outdoor dining, uh, following the governor's order, is what is temporary, uh, a temporary measure of putting out some chairs and tables on an existing surface? And what about expanding that surface, creating a little bit larger concrete or paver patio section and making it more permanent? So, in that type of situation, uh, you know, we would be looking at that, that being permitted to continue on and not expire and give the, the business owner confidence that the, the bylaw won't, uh, or the approval won't expire. So, both could happen over, over the period of time. Now, in any case, I just want to, uh, remind everybody that the standards and criteria of the bylaw apply. It's just that in this case, in this, during this time, staff will be reviewing the bylaw conditions and criteria to make sure that the proposal is appropriate and in, in line with the bylaw requirements. I would be one, and I think Ms. Brestrop would probably join me in, uh, looking forward to the opportunity to come back to the council as we get closer to the 100 expiration of 180 days to talk about what has worked well and what hasn't. And, uh, start to frame the conversation of what could be more, uh, what could be looked at as a longer-term, more permanent changes to the bylaw as we move into hopefully that discussion pretty soon.
Uh, Chris, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Um, I, not really, but I think that our, um, I guess I do. So, our criteria and standards are pretty strict. Um, there's a set of criteria for the zoning board and a set of criteria for the planning board. And we always go through those when we're, um, reviewing a permit application. And I think that Rob and I would, um, review those criteria. And I think that Rob and I would um, review those criteria and standards, you know, each time that we review an application. And so, you know, it, it's really Rob and me who are standing in the place of the zoning board and the planning board, but we're using the same um, criteria for the decision.
Thank you. Mandy Jo, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I was just gonna try and explain it maybe in a little bit more of a layman's terms because it can get confusing and it took me a little bit to figure it out. So what we would be in doing was, is enacting a law, but that law has a sunset clause. And so this law, if we pass this with nine votes, article fourteen will be in effect for a hundred and eighty days, which means who approves the land use permits changes for one hundred and eighty days. Right now, it's planning board and some ZBA. That would switch over to the administrative approvals that this bylaw has. At the end of a hundred and eighty days, the approval method switches back to where it was today, actually. Um, but the appro, the, the permits that might be granted during those hundred and eighty days will stay in effect for however long that permit has a grant for. And that's what Rob was talking about, some of those land use permits might themselves have a sunset clause. Other land use permits might not have a sunset clause. But that, that, that is dependent on what the permit says. Who is issuing the permit is in effect for a hundred and eighty days if this bylaw passes. And that would move to administrative approval away from the planning board just for those one eighty days. And at the end of a hundred and eighty days, it flips automatically back to planning board and ZBA.
In meantime, whatever lessons we have learned, and I'm sure there will be many, will be brought back to the council in a discussion about are there some changes we feel could be permanently made to help businesses move through the process better? That's what I've heard, so thank you for that and additional comment. Dorothy? You have your hand up, thank you.
So I keep hearing things, but, and I would like to vote for this. But I heard several meetings ago, I mean, I've, I've been to every meeting, I think, where this has been discussed, that a new place may put a lot of money in it. And because they put a lot of money in it, we can't say, oh, this doesn't really fit here. This isn't, it, you're causing problems with the buildings next door or whatever it is. So I, I follow to a certain point, but then I say, okay, when the hundred and eighty days is over, if the town who I, I trust, building inspector and planning, I trust them. But if they think, oh, you know, we let somebody in and it is not really working out for the, for that area, that neighborhood or whatever, is there some way that you can say, no, you have the permit, the hundred and eighty days are over? And that's it? Because I thought I heard at, at some meetings that you can't say that because you could, they could say, I spent all this money setting up this store and I, and what do you mean, I have to close it down? So that's where I'm having my problem. Do you have, will you exercise the authority that, to say, this isn't working out? Or do, can they say, no, we're here, we're here forever?
Paul or Rob Moore, I'll just go with you, Rob.
So I would say to your question, probably not. Um, you know, what, what happens with a land use permit now is that it's issued based on a management plan. So at the time of the application, it's found to be uh, meeting and satisfying the requirements of the bylaw. And the way they're drafted now or crafted now is so to ensure that the management plan is effective. So we would do the same thing. We would, we would tr, establish a series of conditions uh, ensuring that the application meets the intent of the bylaw. And the opportunity there in the future, if there is an issue, is to uh, have the business owner react by improving or adjusting their management plan, not removing or suspending the permit, which we do not do now as a matter of practice anyway with either the planning board or the zoning board appeals.
Darcy Dumont?
Yeah, um, this, this conversation has been clarifying for me. Um, I was all ready to vote for it, um, but I was completely unaware that um, there is an intent to, that this just be the first step toward um, doing something like this permanently. Um, and, and that is, I mean, this is being done supposedly because of COVID nineteen and the emergency. And um, I guess that is a big surprise to me.
Darcy? Go ahead.
Was I unmute?
No, please go ahead.
No, I, that's, that's really all I had to say, I was just, I, I am now confused because I had no, uh, I, I was, I, I felt sure that this, this would be over in a hundred and eighty days and that there wouldn't be any further um, you know, slippery slope.
So Dorothy, Dorothy, I'm going to step out of my role as president and just say, in every emergency, there's opportunity. And this is an emergency that is providing us with an opportunity to learn whether or not there are more efficient ways to do our zoning in Amherst so that we are no longer continued to be seen as a town that is not business friendly. It doesn't mean we have agreed to any changes. It just means that we're going into this with our eyes open for the possibility of learning and maybe making some changes. Kathy?
Just, um, since I raised this, I, I meant it as a learning opportunity and I meant it in both ways. Um, some things could be, have gone wrong because we uh, what used to take more time had more voices coming in um, because of a butters coming and people talking and they raised some issues that people hadn't thought about. But what I'm wondering with Rob saying with the planning and zoning board, there's one more piece if it was a restaurant or something that required a license? And the management plan or what we thought it was gonna be, we have one restaurant in downtown that we all know which one it is, that's empty right now because it was closed back down after getting a license. And they spent at least some money on paint because the colors changed in a pretty dramatic way. Um, but if, if, if it were a marijuana shop, if it was a restaurant, if it was a bar bistro that had to get a license, um, would any of those, the licensure would still be, have to be, be in compliant? Um, am I correct on that? You know, so I mean, they would have that, getting a license to run, but you could be saying, something's not working well here or come back, fix this up, address these concerns.
I'm gonna ask Chris Brestrop, who has her hand up, to go ahead and respond to that. Chris, you need to unmute.
I wanted to say that there's no possibility of a marijuana shop sneaking in here. Um, it's not one of the uses that is um, considered. We have three uses, uh, food and drink establishment, personal care establishment, and retail stores. And marijuana has a whole section of the bylaw that's all devoted to marijuana and it's not contained in any of those three um, uses that I mentioned. Second thing I wanted to say is that the ability to grant these permits under this hundred and eighty-day um, window will stop at the end of the hundred and eighty days. And Rob will no longer be able to grant administrative approvals for these types of uses. However, some of the uses will continue because some of the uses will fit exactly what the bylaw had envisioned. And it could be a restaurant that has, you know, pretty strict conditions on it, like most class-two restaurants do. But that could conceivably continue. But the ability to grant permits will not continue unless town council decides at some future date that it wants these, uh, the ability to grant these permits to continue. So I think Ms. Dumont's um, fear of having this go on for longer than a hundred and eighty days, it's all in the hands of the town council. It's not, um, it's not anything to do with article fourteen. So I just wanted to say those things.
Thank you. Alyssa, you have your hand up.
I just want to say on marijuana, I only use that word because someone asked me, so thank you very much, Chris.
Uh, Alyssa, you have your hand up.
Thank you, and so I think I might have said this the last time we talked about it, which is what's the worst that can happen? And, and I, and I mean that really genuinely. I really despise the color Porta is. And at the risk of offending town staff, I think actually Porta could have been forced early days to, oh, paint it back over again because they didn't have permission to change it to that color. And that's a missed opportunity because now it's a really ugly color, which I quite like, actually, just not on a building. Um, but is that, isn't that the worst that could happen in a situation like this? And that happened before this, right? Because they just went ahead and did something and then we just didn't worry about it. And we revoked their license, their license really had nothing to do with the fact that they were idiots and painted too soon. And then they had their license revoked because they were bad actors. And so if maybe somebody who's really scared about this could give an example to Rob of something they're really scared about, and then he could explain how he would apply the management plan so that the issue would be dealt with. I don't know if somebody's worried about live music or what they're concerned about, but I, I'm not understanding what would be so bad to be able to not continue after the end of the hundred and eighty days? Aside from that purple color?
Were there any other questions or comments from the council? Then um, we're going to go ahead, Mandy Jo, I believe you're going to make the motion.
I will, um, I just noticed as I was reading it through again for Athena's benefit that the first reference to the charter section has the wrong letter. Um, so that one should be two ten B, so I will read it correctly, but I wanted to note that for Athena. And so the motion is to adopt zoning bylaw, article fourteen, temporary zoning as an emergency measure in accordance with charter section two ten B. As, I believe it's amended, to be effective on June sixteenth, twenty twenty and to stand repealed on the effective date of the future adoption of said identical bylaw as a measure under charter section two ten A.
Just a minute, okay?
Is there a second?
Second?
Okay, any other discussion at this time?
Lynn, if I could explain why I used as amended?
Yes.
Um, if you look at today, there was a new version put in. Um, the preamble section before effective uses didn't have a heading. And so I added the heading to include that it was the emergency measure preamble. And it also just had a generic date, the word date, and so that changed to June sixteenth, twenty twenty.
Okay, that, and that has been in your packet since last week?
It, no, it was added today, that those two.
I'm sorry, okay. Are there any other questions at this time? Okay, then with the motion's been made and seconded, we'll move to a roll call vote. And we start with Darcy Dumont.
I'm staying.
Reesmer is yes. Anarchy?
Yes.
Dorothy Pam?
Yes.
Evan Ross?
Yes.
George Ryan?
Yes.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Steve Schreiber?
Yes.
Andy Steinberg?
Yes.
Sarah Schwartz?
Yes.
Charlie Baumann?
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer?
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis?
Yes.
The motion passes and the bylaw passes twelve, zero to one, twelve, four, none against, one abstention, no absence. Okay, we are going to move on to the next item in our agenda. We've already done water and sewer rates, we've already done the capital improvements, the one-month budget. And the reason this could not be on the consent agenda is because of, it's a financial matter. Um, so Andy, I'm going to call on you to give the finance committee report. And if there are any questions about the one-month budget, Paul and Sean and Sonia are with us.
Okay, um, the one-month budget has really been presented to the council and we had a hearing that was a joint uh, meeting of the finance committee and the uh, council. And there was plenty of opportunity to address questions and get explanations. So I'm hesitant to go very deeply um, into it because I think that we've actually had plenty of discussion already and if the remaining questions that can come forward as questions and probably be responded to. The finance committee um, reviewed it after the uh, hearing that I referred to and um, voted unanimously to recommend the order that establishes this to you. And um, I, um, I think that the one thing that I asked to be put onto the screen was the order itself, which is part of the finance committee report. And I don't know if that's still possible as we go forward.
Surge is ready. No, that is not.
To get down to the bottom of the um, document where the orders are.
Yes.
So it's the next one, I, so this is the Community Conservation Act, so we need to keep going.
Here we go.
So, stop, so uh, the one thing that I would stop, but uh, right here, it's perfect. Uh, what I wanted to do is to just point out to um, council that um, the appropriations are, um, that are referenced in here are set forth in the table. And uh, the actual appropriations are in the left-hand column for amount appropriated. And uh, so that you'll see, for example, if the town operating budget is um, a appropriation of one million, six hundred and twenty thousand dollars. On the right-hand side, after that big black bar, is the source of the funds. And uh, the source of the funds um, has to do with the um, enterprise funds. Uh, it shows that those come from enterprise funds and that the other items that are listed in here have to be, are funds that are being raised and appropriated, which is the term that we always use in appropriations. It was used in our former, former government and it's used now to indicate that it is gonna be raised normally by taxation or other means and appropriated. And um, so that this is an active appropriation um, for the one month. Um, and I guess the last thing that I'll just point out and then see, um, as the president, if she is, wants to ask for questions, is that um, as has been previously explained, um, this is a um, one-month measure. And uh, when we adopt an FY twenty-one budget, um, this amount will fold into that budget and become a part of the FY twenty-one budget. The purpose of this um, one-month budget is to allow the town to operate during the month of July while we take a little bit more time to um, develop uh, the budget, see what the legislature is doing and um, review the actual FY twenty-one budget. So with that, I will pause, uh, turn it back to the president.
Thank you, Andy. Are there any questions? As I think Andy observed, we've had several conversations of this and an opportunity to ask questions. So seeing none, then I'm going to ask Andy to go ahead and make the motion.
Okay, I just have to uh, find it on my motion sheet.
It's item D.
I thought, um, so I've moved to adopt appropriation and transfer order FY twenty-one dash oh four A in order appropriating the town of Amherst FY twenty-one operating budget for the month of July twenty twenty as recommended by the finance committee and shown on pages five and six of a finance committee report titled Town Finance Committee, June fifteen, twenty twenty.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Thank you, Kathy. Are there any further questions or discussion? Okay, seeing none, we're moving to a roll call vote. Okay, seeing none, we're moving to a roll call vote. We start with Griesmer, and I support this, yes. Hanke?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Ross?
Yeah.
Ryan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Schreiber? Steve Schreiber? Maybe I'll come back to that. Andy Steinberg?
Yes.
Sarah Schwartz?
Yes.
Balman?
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer?
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis?
Yes.
Darcy Dumont?
Yes.
And Steve Schreiber, have you returned? He may have taken a break. Steve, oh, he's come on twice. I'm wondering if he's having connection problems.
I'm having sound problems. Can you hear me?
Okay, yes, we can.
I'm having a sound.
And did you vote yes for this or what was your? This is the vote.
Yes.
Okay, all right. So the votes thirteen zero zero, no absences. Thank you, Steve. We're going to move on then to the Community Preservation Act. This item was pulled consent agenda. And I think at this point, Serge, we want to put the same Finance Committee report back up again and show the twelve projects that were recommended by the Finance Committee. It was in the previous part. There we go, right? And, okay, all right. This came before the Finance Committee. I think that at this point, hearing a Finance Committee report would be appropriate. And that would be Andy.
So.
I'm sorry. It also came to Community Resources. And so Mandy Jo will also be asking you to speak to your report, okay?
Yes. The Finance Committee absolutely recommended this motion, but I need to make an explanation. It sort of came up in an earlier question, and I just want to clarify. And it gets to why this is on the agenda at this point in time and why the next motion will be to suspend the Council Rule eight point four. What we ended up doing with both the Community Resources and Finance Committee is to decide that we would ask the Community Preservation Act Committee to present its recommendations that were related to expenditures from the current year, for the current year, and that we would not ask for a presentation at that joint meeting that was referred to in both reports on the one item that involved borrowing and was a item that was not going to require expenditures to be made in July. And so that the one that was obviously I'm referencing is the Jones Library request. That is not a part of this appropriation and transfer order. What the Community Preservation Act does is that it has a special piece of taxation that gets paired with some money from the legislature and provides the ability to make appropriations for very specific purposes, community housing, historic preservation, open space, and recreation. And those items are reviewed by a Community Preservation Act Committee according to state statute. Once the Community Preservation Act Committee makes a recommendation of expenditures, it then belongs to the council. And the council then votes up or down on the slate of programs that are recommended or on each one. But it, the one thing that it can't do is it cannot add another proposal. So if somebody came along with either a proposal to increase an amount or to add a whole new program, that could not be done without going back to the Community Preservation Act Committee. So it's before us is what was recommended by the committee. The reason we wanted to do this now and not delay, which is of course different from the one that was removed, is that these are projects that begin in July. There were requests were made by various sources, various applicants for funding for projects that they would like to see happen during FY twenty one, which begins July first. And in order to allow those entities that had asked for the funds if to have the opportunity to spend the entire twelve months of fiscal year doing whatever it is that they have asked to do, we needed to move that forward. And that's why we created the process that had the joint hearing before the two committees, actually, the two committees to decide whether to make a recommendation on these projects and then present it to the council, which is what is proposed for tonight. And the reason that I will later be making a motion to suspend Town Council Rule eight point four for this purpose is because that allows us to make the appropriations and allows the projects that are before you, as you look at the screen, if they're supported by the council, to begin their work. Each, all of them, and I asked the committee this question, and was assured, and they did some checking, and they assure me that all of these are ready to move forward. The committee had, the Finance Committee had some other comments about that. These proposals are incorporated into the report, and I can come to that later. So I guess I'll stop there and see if the Community Resources Committee has anything to say.
Mandy Jo?
Thank you. Um, as Andy summarized much of it very well, I just want to go into the discussions the Community Resources Committee had and then its vote. We, in our discussions, recognized that nearly all of these projects, if not all of them, have an impact or have have a greater importance due to COVID. It might not seem it immediately, but when you start thinking about it, all of the housing projects for affordable housing, that one, I I think, is obvious for many people, why that one would be so important as we pull out of COVID. But also trails, they are in high use right now. And the the project at the high school for the track, again, something that is in very high use right now. So even though they might not appear as important due to COVID, they are recognized by the CRC as important due to COVID. And in relation to that, we also recognize, though, that there is a reserve, and we don't know what the future is going to behold come this fall. And so it, we wanted to point out that there is a possibility for supplemental appropriation with that reserve to be able to better tailor and address issues that might come up that can be funded through the CPA that also might relate to needs because of the COVID pandemic. After that discussion, and again, we did not discuss the recommended library funding. That one was, for reasons that Andy indicated, put off, even though it was mentioned in the CPA presentation. So after all the discussions, CRC voted unanimously to recommend the council approve this appropriation and transfer order.
And Andy, what was the vote on this Finance Committee?
She got back and looked, and I believe it was four to zero, one number absent.
Okay, are there questions from the council? So I'm not seeing any questions. So the slate of projects is before you. As mentioned earlier, we need a vote to suspend Rule eight point four. And then we're going to go on and vote for the projects. Andy, would you please offer the motion?
I move to suspend Town Council Rules of Procedure eight point four for the current agenda item.
Second.
Okay, Mandy Jo's the second. Is there any further discussion on that? All right, then we begin with Mandy Jo.
Yes.
Dorothy Pam? Dorothy Pam?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Evan Ross?
Hello.
George Ryan?
Yes.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Steve Schreiber?
Yes.
Andy Steinberg?
Yes.
Sarah Schwartz?
Yes.
Charlie Balman?
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer?
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis?
Yes.
Darcy Dumont?
Yes.
And Lynn Griesmer's a yes. Passes thirteen zero zero, nobody absent. And we'll move on to the main motion at this point, which is our to the motion. And that's the, Andy, would you please proceed? This is the motion on the transfer order.
Yes, I move to adopt appropriation and transfer order FY twenty one dash oh seven in order appropriating the FY twenty one Community Preservation Act budget as recommended by the Finance Committee and the Community Resources Committee and shown on page four of the Finance Committee report titled Town Council Finance Committee, June fifteen, twenty twenty.
The second?
Second, DeAngelis.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, then we begin with Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
Evan Ross?
Yes.
George Ryan?
Yes.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Steve Schreiber?
Yes.
Andy Steinberg?
Yes.
Sarah Schwartz?
Yes.
Charlie Balman?
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer?
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis?
Yes.
Darcy Dumont?
Yes.
Lynn Griesmer's a yes, and Mandy Jo Hanke?
Yes.
Passes thirteen zero zero. And we now move on to the letter to the Zoning Board of Appeals regarding one thirty two North Hampton Road. I just want to make sure I'm correct in that. Yes, yes. No, yes, this was done by consent. Okay. We're on to the letter to the Zoning Board of Appeals. And let me just say that this was my two week assignment to try to come up with something. We have an opportunity, the Zoning Board of Appeals is getting ready to begin the hearing process for one thirty two North Hampton Road. In the process of doing that, it was brought to my attention that normally a body such as ours or any other boards in town may wish to file a letter. And so I drafted this letter using examples of previous select board letters as well as the letter we sent to the Department of Housing and Community Development in support of the project earlier this year. The, if we proceed with this, we do need to suspend Rules eight point four. And then we need to authorize with changes the President to sign the letter. So one of the options that I pointed out was that we could actually take a vote, which we've never done, that actually says we support the project, or we can just authorize the letter. We did take one vote when we put out the CPA money, which was five hundred thousand dollars. And that was last July one. And we took another vote when we sent the letter, you authorized the President to send the letter to the Housing and Community Development. And so this is a draft, obviously subject to all kinds of changes. And we'll start with Mandy Jo.
Thank you. I I asked for removal for a couple of reasons. I have some requested changes on the draft, but I'm going to bring up the same thing I brought up the last time we had this in front of us for a DHCD letter, which is when we were dealing with this with all of the residents back last year regarding the CPA money, we kept telling them, and then for months afterward, that it, we were ju, our only involvement was to grant CPA money, that then they had to go other places. And yet, here we are again, actually contemplating taking a vote in support of it, which I think belies. I, it's not that I don't support that vote, it's that I don't think we should have been so adamant to the residents that opposed this project and wanted a say in front of us, that we didn't have another say. And then we get a letter like this and a potential motion, and it comes out on the weekend without barely any notice to the residents, although it appears at least one resident noticed it, given some emails that have passed today. But I I think that is bad practice. And so that's one of the reasons I wanted to remove it, because I don't think I can vote for it. I think I will, what I did with DHCD is the same, which is abstaining, because I don't think we should say one thing and three months later do something else. And the changes I am requesting, despite all of that, is in the revised letter, the sentence that was added in the very first paragraph should be residence, E N T S, not E N C E S. Just in terms of just a grammatical thing. And then there are two items. The first one is on page two. In the paragraph that starts on January sixth, twenty twenty, Valley CDC provided an update to the Town Council. Right after the change, we're, that removed the line, but making a number of requests for improvements, there is a sentence that says this letter was written after an extensive public comment process during the thirty day comment period. I think that sentence is misleading. We did write that letter in the middle of the thirty day comment period, not after, because we actually had to, as a council, comment during the thirty day comment period. We did not actually review any of the public comments prior to writing our letter. Yet this sentence, I think, implies that our letter was written after review of all those comments. And so I would ask that it get deleted, because I think it misinforms and implies something that didn't actually happen. And then my.
I want to clarify. So you wanted to leave the sentence, this letter was written after an extensive public comment process during the thirty day comment period?
Correct. And then the next request is to the bullet points. It's the very first bullet point, I believe, on the next page. The second bullet point of the primary reasons for support. It starts, the need for additional market rate housing has been well documented. This building project doesn't have market rate housing. I believe this is a holdover bullet point from a previous letter. I would recommend deleting the whole bullet point.
Okay. All right. Anything else, Mandy Jo?
That was it.
Steve Schreiber?
So I don't oppose a project, but I do, I'm not in favor of a letter. And the reason is very simple, that we are the appointing officers for the Zoning Board of Appeals. And I don't think it's appropriate for us to try to be influencing on any other matters, including something that we clearly have supported in the past. You know, also, the letter says pretty much everything that is public record anyway. But I don't think that we should be trying to influence a quasi judicial board that we appoint. So we're very different from the select board that way.
Okay. George Ryan?
Just wanted to point out that I think what we're seeing on the screen is not the current amended letter. Is that correct? I think we're looking at the first version. So I think there's a second version that should be on the screen.
Go to the top, Serge, for me to see what, which letter we're looking at. You are correct. This is not the amended one. The change on the amended. The change on the amended one, the sentence that was removed or asked to be removed by Mandy Jo, I'm sorry, was amended, is in the first sentence, "When conducting the lottery for those who will will be housed, we also ask that preference be given to Amherst residents." And that would be the second sentence of the first paragraph. Then the other change that was made was the removal on the second page in the paragraph that begins on January sixth, two thousand twenty, is to remove after the word "development" the phrase, "but making a number of requests for improvement to the plan." And then the request that's now been made is the next sentence be removed, and that the paragraph that... Or the bullet that begins "The need for additional market rate" be removed. I don't know whether Serge is able to find the other letter at this point, but...
Let me go ahead and display it. I think I have the right one in front of me right now.
Okay. So Evan, you have your hand up.
Yeah, so I was actually curious about the sentence in the first paragraph that was added. So I... And I also read through the email a change that occurred with a resident earlier. I don't personally remember the council taking any position on exercising our local option to give a local preference. I don't remember ever voting on that.
Position on that. It was something that was discussed, that's all.
And so that sentence, to me, is a decision that we actually haven't discussed as a council, and it's actually one that I don't support. I think that there are a lot of great people who currently afford to live in Amherst, who live in other communities, who would love the opportunity to move in here. And I think that we would really benefit from them coming here. And so I don't want to exclude anyone just because they can't currently afford to live in Amherst or didn't happen to end up in an Amherst shelter, an Amherst hotel. So I certainly first wouldn't want to include that sentence without having a discussion in this body, and two, would actually like to see that sentence removed.
Okay. Alyssa?
I was hoping to go later. I just want to point out that... So I have a difference of opinion with Steve as to his rationale, because I'd like to tease that out a little bit further, because if Steve had been a member of the Select Board back in the day, then perhaps he would have told the Select Board not to write such a letter, because the Select Board appointed the ZBA, just like the Town Council appoints the ZBA. So I don't understand the difference there in terms of that rationale, unless one argues that our policy leadership role, which is very big in the Charter, it is not an executive authority. It is a policy leadership role, but it also appoints the ZBA, which, let's face it, means that our opinions of what should happen come through in our appointments to the ZBA and the Planning Board. That's simply a fact. It's not some generic neutral position we have when we make those appointments. So is the question whether or not you're wondering whether or not our policy leadership extends to this? And I totally understand, as I did before when Mandy Jo said that, since I was one of the people that was so adamant that said, "We don't have any further decision points." I cut this a little differently than she does in terms of deciding to send a letter to the ZBA based on all the things that we heard at meetings that we held and that we continue to hear, to me, is not the kind of decision I need to ask the public whether or not, again, they agree with a particular letter that we're going to send, just like I'm not going to ask the public if they agree with a letter I'm going to send to promote the Student Opportunity Act or a whole bunch of other things that we're going to do legislatively and have done in the past. So yes, it's out there in the public, but I'm not going to ask them to edit it or tell us not to sign it, because I base it on what we've already discussed prior to the letter being discussed. So I appreciate the changes that have been made. Obviously, things are different. It's not exactly the same. But I don't agree with the argument that it's because we appoint the ZBA that, in fact, is exactly false, in my opinion. But I understand the concern that we've not talked about it at length, and I appreciate what Evan just said about the local preference and that we really didn't have the right setting to have a voted conversation about how that would work. In a different world, we might have referred that to somebody. But this was our first go-round at this rodeo as a Town Council, and it didn't happen.
So at this point, the additional deletion is the sentence that was added in, in red on your screen. Dorothy Pam?
Okay, I just want to ask a question and to make a statement. The local option, I... And I'm not expert in this at all, but I thought I heard that the town had to apply for it. And I do agree that we should discuss this as a council before we put it in the letter. I do want to speak for the local option. We've been to many, many meetings, talked to many, many people of this project. I think we've come to an understanding now. And Valley CDC has made a number of changes and responded to a lot of questions and issues. So I think that we have something that will be okay. However, in the discussion, in the selling of this, the words that were used again and again was that it was going to help with the problem of people who live in Amherst or who work in Amherst, or also maybe who shelter in Amherst, that it wasn't a general thing we were doing for the public. I mean, I do... Evan made a good point. But in terms of when we talked about this at meeting after meeting, and Valley CDC did too, though perhaps carefully, it was the idea that it was going to deal with a problem of that existed, that some people who worked here couldn't afford to live here, and some people who lived here couldn't afford their rent at all, and some people who didn't even have a home, but came through Amherst or sheltered, were going to try to have supportive housing. So I think that still is our strongest point. So I would like to suggest that the... Whatever the process is for asking for the local option, and I think maybe the town applies for it, I think that we should, you know, I guess, vote to do that and to apply for it. And then to... If we do send a letter, which again, that's more discussion on that, that it should be there. But we had not discussed that as a council. So that's really part of the issue that people are bringing up. So although I agree with the impulse behind the addition, I do think that we need to go a little slower here.
I'm also going to ask Paul Bachmann to speak to that issue a little bit. But in fact, Paul, why don't you go ahead and speak to the issue of the local option, since you investigated that with your staff earlier today?
Thank you, Lynn. So yes, that question did come up, and I asked our staff. And what they basically said is that typically is incorporated during the ZBA comprehensive permit process, that that's where that decision is made. Although I'm just looking at documents now, and it's not entirely clear, because it's just all came out this afternoon.
I think it's very possible that at this point, we need to take that out of the letter, because it's not been thoroughly discussed. We don't have time to discuss it tonight. We could return to it, but we could also find out more about how that happens. Okay. Pat, you have your hand up.
Thank you. I am totally opposed to the local preference, so I'm glad you're saying, "Let's get it out." But I... If it comes back, I will vote no. Evan's shared some good reasons. But I want to talk about two things. One is we had extensive public comment with this process. And it might not have been in a thirty-day window, but we had massive public comment and public input on this project. And I think that should be reflected in the letter. But the other thing is during that process of listening to public comment, I began to understand the racism and classism that was driving some of the opponents of the project. And normally, I wouldn't bring that up. But given what the times are, I feel very strongly that I need to bring it up. Quotes that I have in my notes. "If we open it up to people from outside Amherst, they will come." That's one quote. "I don't want a homeless person using my street as a shortcut to walk to Amity Street to get the bus." Another comment. And I have more of them. I think those two are enough. It's coded language, but it's classist and it's racist. And we should not be supporting that in any way, shape, or form.
Thank you. Darcy?
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to say that I agree with Mandy Jo's initial comments that if we have earlier taken a position that we are not going to take a position, that it seems like we should not be doing this. And I'm... I appreciate that you put all of the work into it, Lynn, but I'm wondering... I guess I wasn't aware that you were doing that and that that didn't first come to the council to get our okay before you put all the work into it.
Let me just say that whether I put the work in or not, I think it's important that the council knows where the process is and that it's moving forward. I would suspect that some counselors may decide to attend the ZBA hearings as they begin. Of course, when they speak, they need to speak as counselors, I mean, as individuals, not for the council. And so whether or not we did all this work, which there is a difference of opinion, I would say across the council as to whether or not the letter is appropriate. But whether or not we did it or not, it is important that we, as a council, recognize where this is in process. Alyssa, you have your hand up.
Alyssa? Thank you. Just to follow up on what you said about that is that this is... I'll take fault on this on a couple of areas. One is, again, a difference of opinion as to what it means to say we aren't an approval process. I didn't say... I know I never said to the public that very full room in the Bank Center and elsewhere, "I will never have an opinion on this again," because that's not true. I knew I would have an opinion in the future on this. One of the reasons we didn't get to it sooner is, of course, pandemic, and we didn't know when the letter, when the actual comprehensive permit was going to get filed for, right? So you don't write to the ZBA prospectively, knowing that months from now, they might get it something, because something could have changed. So I think I understand the differences of opinion on that, and that's fine, that we can disagree on that. But one of the major concerns I have, based on my actual service in town, is that I know that some of you are going to go to the ZBA hearings. And if you're going to talk, even if you say, "I'm not speaking as a town counselor," you're going to sound like you're speaking for the Town Council. And so I would feel much more comfortable when you do that if there was a letter from the Town Council that said, "Here's our basic deal. Here's the things we heard about over time. Here's what we said." And understanding, for example, the local preference needs to come out, because we didn't talk about that to the extent that we could vote on it. But if we write nothing and individual counselors show up to the ZBA, how on earth is the ZBA supposed to interpret that? And how is the public supposed to interpret that? So while I understand that some people have a discomfort level with writing a Town Council letter, on the other hand, if we don't have a base document, it is literally the Wild West in terms of what individual counselors say and what that implies about the town position. So careful what you wish for.
George Ryan?
The only formal vote that we've taken, that I'm aware of, was taken in regards to the CPA funding, where this body did, in fact, express its strong support for this project. Everything else that's been mentioned are things that individuals may or may not have said at a public meeting about what may or may not happen in the future. But the only thing that we've done formally as a body in a vote was to express our strong support for this project. And this letter, it seems to me, appropriately asks us to reaffirm that strong support before it goes to the ZBA. And so I think Alyssa makes a number of good points that I would support. And I think this is something that we should do, we've already done. And I think that it would be appropriate for us to do one more time before this goes to the ZBA.
Okay, so we have the question of whether we should send the letter at all. Then we have the question of if we're going to send the letter, what should the letter say? And once on... And once we do that, then there's the authorization of the President to sign the letter on behalf of the council. So before we go on and edit the letter, I would like to make a... Here... I would like to make a motion that the council, in fact, send a letter to the ZBA in support of one thirty-two North Hampton Road. Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay. So now we're going to bring that question to a vote. Okay? And the first one up is...
Lynn?
Yes.
I... Could I clarify what this motion is? I mean, our motion sheet hasn't authorized you to sign a letter. Your motion was to send a letter. And is that motion to send the letter that we've seen or just a generic send a letter?
It is a generic send a letter, because the question that's been raised by you and at least two other counselors is whether or not we should even be sending a letter. So rather than spend more time editing a letter, I'd like to know whether or not we believe we should send one. Further questions, Mandy Jo?
Nope. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay. All right. We start with, I believe, Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
Evan Ross?
Yes.
George Ryan?
Yes.
Kathy Shane?
Staying.
Abstain, okay. Steve Schreiber?
No.
Andy Steinberg?
Yes.
Sarah Schwartz?
Yes.
Callie Ballman?
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer?
Yes.
Patty Angeles?
Yes.
Darcy Dumont?
No.
Greasmerzy, yes. Hanneke?
No.
Okay. So the vote is nine in favor, one against... I'm sorry, three against and one abstention. So it passes that we should send the letter. This is interesting. All right. This is interesting. All right, so let's go to the actual letter. And the question is whether or not, these are the changes I've seen, I've seen, okay? The first one is to remove the sentence in red completely. On the next page, all the way down at the bottom in the paragraph on January 6, 2020, it is to remove the phrase, but making a number of requests for improvements to the plan. And also the next sentence, this letter was written after an extensive public comment process during the 30-day comment period. Okay, and then the third request was to remove the bullet on the beginning of the next page, which is the need for additional market rate housing, et cetera, et cetera, ending with the library. Is there any other changes to the letter at this time? Let me point out that the letters suggested there would be a vote to support this. Do you want to include that? So are there, I see Patty Angelis, please.
Yes, let me see. This, I would like to have this letter was written after extensive public comment. You know, because that happened before we just made any decisions about the CPA money or anything else. And so not to have that we've had an extensive process, I think weakens that section. So I don't think, I, I don't know if Mandy Jo is right about the 30-day comment period, but our public comment process was intense.
I think-
Including visits by counselors to the abutters and them taking us on a tour of their neighborhoods, et cetera. And that-
So can I suggest that the sent, the part of the sentence that people felt most uncomfortable with is process during the 30-day comment period? So that what you're suggesting, Pat, is the letter would include, this letter was written after extensive public comment period?
It doesn't quite work as a sentence yet, but the town council submitted a letter to blah, 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 demonstrating support of the development after an extensive public comment process. How's that?
Yes. All right, Andy?
I just wanted to say I would support that as the person that recommended deletion of the full sentence that Pat's, Pat's revision I support.
Well, the sentence would now read, I just want to make sure, is the town council submitted a letter to DHCD demonstrating support of the development after an extensive public process? Yes? Andy Jo?
I think it's after an extensive public comment.
Comment process, yeah.
After extensive public comment? Yes.
Extensive public comment process.
Got it. Thank you. So the sentence reads, the town council submitted a letter DHCD demonstrating support of the development after an extensive public comment process, period. Andy Steinberg?
Yes. I guess that I wanted to understand what the proposal was regarding the bullet at the top of page three that begins the need for additional market rate housing. Was the proposal to take out the first sentence only or the entire bullet?
The proposal was to take out the entire bullet.
Okay, then I want to just point out that I would suggest not taking out the last two sentences because they, they deal with a different subject matter. The first has to do with reference to the housing market study and market rate housing and that this is not housing that fits into that category. The second two sentences have to do with the location of this, its consistency with the master plan and its proximity to public transportation, retail services and the library. If they're different subject matter, I think the objection to the first sentence made sense, but I would suggest not removing the rest of the bullet.
Mandy Jo, you were the one that-
That's fine with me. I think I was really focusing on the first sentence and didn't catch the other two.
Are there any other changes to the letter? Okay. So we come to the very first sentence and the first sentence says that we would voted today. Would people, I, I really need to get a sense of the council, whether or not you want to vote today in, in support of this project or you want me to modify this and just send the letter?
Can you tell me what the alternative wording would be? Would it be the council authorized you to send a letter or what does it say?
I mean, it would be very similar to the letter that's attached, which is the letter that we sent to the the letter we sent to CHD and it says, thank you for the opportunity to provide comments on the application for project eligibility, blah, blah, blah. The project is seeking a comprehensive permit. Some of the words become basically a statement of what we're, why we're sending the letter. It's on the second, it's the attached letter to the other one. I think it's later. Yes, keep going. Keep going. Right here. So it would be more like that opening sentence. And then I blended it in. Does that answer your question, Kathy?
It does answer my question because somehow it feels very odd for me to vote on a letter. As, as a statement, it's a clearer way for me to, to me to to say why we're sending this. Although I guess we're not thanking ZBA for the opportunity to provide public comment, but whatever, whatever that is.
Darcy, you have your hand up.
I want to say that I am very disappointed at the idea of taking out the request for a local option. When you put forward something which is a good and something which is needed, the people in the area, in the town say, maybe that could be me. Now, this is not going to be where the people are going to be judged as by need. It's a lottery. People will be vetted to be included in this lottery, but it's not going to be ranked by this is the most needy. We got to put this one. They have to get through some kind of basic screening and they get put in the lottery. When you do local option, all the names in the bag are not people who either live or work or have been sheltered in Amherst. There's a, that's our only, I think maybe there's 70% of the people in the bag, but still then, or their names are drawn out of a bag or else there are two bags. I, I did read the description and it is in detail, but I don't have it. I just know that when they do housing like this, say in New York City, where so many people have been waiting for affordable housing, being somebody who, who lives in the town and got on the list or whatever, it, it matters. So I just feel that, you know, I theoretical principles are great, but I, I, I'm a town council member for Amherst and I'm thinking of there aren't even that many apartments and we talked about so many people who actually work in, in the universities or in the town or in businesses or whatever and can't afford to live here. And then they're going to find out that it can be anybody. I, I just feel it would be intensely disappointing to people who might have been looking forward to this and supporting it.
Dorothy, I'm going to suggest that we put aside the issue of local option. If we decide as a council that we want to have a further discussion about it when we can find out what that really means and how it's really done, that we might add an addendum to this letter at a later date. But to try to resolve that without the advice of people who understand local option, I think would be a useless circuitous discussion tonight. So.
I, I, I agree with you.
Okay, Evan?
So, so now that I think I'm understanding your question about whether we want to say that we voted because there's those, what are we actually voting on? Kathy brought that up. I, I don't like how the DHCD letter actually started now that I'm looking at it because I always think that you need to lead with what your message is in case they only read the first sentence. So I'm suggesting, you know, maybe we just say, the Amherst Town Council recommends approval of open with that and then we're voting to authorize you to send this letter. So we're de facto voting to recommend, but it's, it's not separating.
I think it's good. So the first sentence would be the Amherst Town Council recommends approval of.
That's my suggestion, yes.
Kathy Shane?
I very much like the idea of bringing the local option back for discussion item. Lynn, no, not doing it tonight. Because I heard a lot about this, so I just, I don't want to extend the, but not just sometime in the next distant future, but if you can squeeze it in while this process is going on.
Okay. Is there any other comment? Let me-
We can't, we're not going to add local option tonight.
No, we aren't, we are not adding it tonight. We will bring it back at a near and future agenda. Could we go back to the very beginning of the very letter and let me just one more time state where we have made the changes, okay? The first change is, the first sentence will read, the Amherst Town Council recommends approval of. Okay, the next is to remove the line in red, which is around the local auction. The other changes the people have made are all the way on the bottom of the second page. And in that case, the second sentence will read, the town council submitted a letter to DHCD demonstrating support of the development after an extensive public comment process, period. And will eliminate all of the other words around that, including, but making a number of requests for improvement and this letter was written and process and during the 30-day comment period. All of that will be eliminated. And then on the next page, under the second, what would be the second bullet in that paragraph, we're eliminating the first sentence only and then we are leaving in this increased housing production and its location, blah, blah, blah. Okay? Are there any other changes requested at this time? Okay, then I would like to make a motion. First of all, we need to
Consent, consent covered suspending the rules, Lynn.
I'm sorry?
The consent already suspended the rule.
Thank you. So then we need to authorize President Greasmer. Always sounds a little strange, to sign the letter of support to the zoning board of appeals. Permit zoning, ZBA FY 2020, 30-39 Valley, Mainly Development Corporation, 132 North Hampton Road. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, then we're going to go to a roll call vote. And we begin with Evan Ross.
Yes.
George Ryan?
Yes.
Kathy Shane?
Abstain.
Steve Schreiber?
No.
Andy Steinberg?
Yes.
Sarah Schwartz?
Yes.
Callie Ballneum?
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer?
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis?
Yes.
Darcy Dumont?
No.
Lynn Greasmer is a yes. Mandy Jo Hanukky?
Yes.
And Dorothy Pam?
Yes.
So the vote is ten in favor, two against and one abstention. Thank you. I will share the final letter with you when you pack it. So we are going to go on to a memo that we began discussing last week. And this is the memo regarding what to do with public, permanent public way requests. And we did have some conversation and I just want to reintroduce that the memos has two different suggestions. And then it suggests that it be sent off to TSO for discussion and eventually then to GOL depending on what TSO comes up with. So the, and the issue as I presented last time is that we've been inconsistent with how we handle a permanent request in the public way. And that has led to sometimes people showing coming to council meeting, expecting to give a presentation and then finding out after they do it there, they also have to do it again for TSO. So before this, we moved to recommend to move to refer this. What other things would people like to say at this point? Okay, I'm not seeing that anybody wants to add anything further to what we've already said. And so this is there's a motion. And it's to refer President Greasmer's 530 53120 memo. Options for council review of long-term permanent changes, public way to the town services and outreach committee and to the governance organization and legislative committee for important recommendation to the town council in 90 days. Is there a second?
Second. Ryan?
Thank you, George. Any further discussion? Okay, then we'll do a roll call vote. We begin with George Ryan.
Yes.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Steve Schreiber?
Yes.
Andy Steinberg?
Yes.
Sarah Schwartz?
Yes.
Callie Ballneum?
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer?
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis?
Yes.
Darcy Dumont?
Yes.
Lynn Greasmer is a yes. And Mandy Jo Hanukky?
Yes.
Dorothy Pam?
Yes.
Evan Ross?
Yes.
It's referred with a 12, with a 13-0-0 vote. Okay, we're moving on to appointments. Let me just get myself reassembled.
Lynn?
Yes.
Is there, what is the timeframe? Is that 90 days or what?
90.
Okay.
Your schedule had us going back to presentations.
Thank you. So it must be my night. So in, I sent out about two weeks ago, a timeline for the town manager's evaluation. I have since taken that timeline and revised it based on comments I received actually from only two counselors, but they were substantial and useful. And the one question that did get raised is, at this point as a council, we are scheduled not to meet on July 20th, 27th, 3rd and 10th. That makes this a jam, but we've done it in the past. And so as we look at this schedule, we need to keep that in mind. Alyssa Brewer? Have your hand up.
I'm so sorry. I was hoping to catch you before. So for all of us who've been here since 5:30, could we plan on a recess pretty soon?
Yes. Five-minute break, okay? Let's just do that now.
Thank you.
We'll reconvene in five minutes. That is at 8:45. That is at 8:45. Just take yourself on the video, and then I'll know you're back. Right, we're going to continue with a presentation and discussion, Town Manager Evaluation Calendar. And just reminder of the process. So, Mandy Jo, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you. The schedule for finance and all of our budget stuff includes a finance committee hearing, the required budget hearing on the full year budget on Monday, July 13th. And it also then has a vote on the budget in the full town council on July 20th. That is a schedule that we adopt, or at least I believe the finance committee adopted, even though I know our original year-long schedule did not have a meeting on the 20th, given, I think it was moved from the 13th to the 20th, given the COVID issues and all, and the need for pushing the budget into July. So if the finance committee is not holding their budget hearing until July 13th, we absolutely must have a council meeting either July 20th or July 27th, because we have to vote that budget by July 31st or July 30th, I think is what it was in the motion we passed today. And so I would, I would recommend, I think we also need a couple of, you know, there's so much built up in pandemic and things take longer. I would recommend we move the items on July 13th to July 20th, and on the 13th hold the budget hearing. And we vote the budget on July 20th as all of the, including all the rest of the stuff that in this memo was listed on July 13th. But I also recommend we hold a meeting on July 3rd for regular business, so that the July 17th meeting can be less than regular business. I'm not sure how reading stuff and the distribution will work electronically. I'm not sure, because we used to get it all in paper at once. So I'm, you know, arrangements haven't been worked out, but it will probably take longer for people to read if it's sitting on a computer than in a paper form with running back and forth and all. So it could take longer than we had before. And so, so I would advocate adding a meeting on August 3rd for regular business and August 17th. And then my only other concern on all of this was that the schedule right now has the draft manager goals being delivered on July 13th, or with my proposal, July 20th, but not being discussed until August 17th. That is a really long time, in my opinion, to have the goals out there without them actually being talked about by the council. And so if we're not going to discuss them till August 17th, maybe we could just have them delivered as part of the packet for the August 17th meeting 48 hours in advance or something, so that they're not out there for a full month without us being able to talk about them.
So, Mandy Jo, I want to understand, you're suggesting we, we meet as a council on July 13th for the purpose of the hearing of the budget?
Well, that's the finance committee budget hearing schedule right now. And I think it's normally called as a council meeting, but I would recommend that's all that happens that day.
Okay. And then, but on Monday, July 20th, which we also need to have, adopt the budget, we would move everything that was listed for the 13th to the 20th.
Yes.
Then I'd need to make an adjustment on the 16th, but I can do that. And that we also then meet on August 3rd. Is that what I heard?
Yeah, for regular business. So that we can remove regular business from August 17th.
Okay, and that we, and that the goals might be distributed on the 3rd, but discussed on the 17th, or distributed in time for the packet for the 17th?
Yeah, I would like to see a closer timeframe between when the goals are out in the public and when we actually get to discuss them.
Are there other suggestions, Darcy?
Yeah, I was on the, the previous Goals Ad-Hoc Committee, and I think that it worked very well. And I'm just, I, I'm missing whether we had a discussion about how, how we should do it this time around. And it seems to me like both the evaluation and the goals should be, it makes more sense to do them with an ad hoc committee. So I'm interested in knowing what other people on the council think of that. I, I don't have any problems with this timeframe. I know that if we appointed an ad hoc committee, that would throw it off a little bit. But I personally think it makes sense to make sure that we are as objective as we can be and not putting it all on, on our president, who, you know, has, needs to be interacting with the town manager on a daily basis. It's a little, you know, it feels like it's a little, we could put a little more distance in there by having an ad hoc committee look at the evaluation and the goals. And like I said, the Goals Committee worked together really well. I thought we, you know, were very efficient in, in getting the goals together, although very late, of course. So just wondering what other people think about the possibility of having an ad hoc committee do this rather than putting it all on Lynn.
Suggestions been made? Are there other comments? We need that what we did last time was we brought the goals to the council, and then when it was apparent there were a lot more discussion needed, we formed the Ad-Hoc Committee for the Goals. And if people want to have an ad hoc committee for the goals, we can, but we need to get started a lot sooner, and we need to get it done a lot faster. Alyssa?
So time passes. And we see what worked well, and I, and I understood what Darcy was in favor of doing the same thing we did last year. I still don't understand why, and that, something I don't understand hasn't changed over the past year, which is that I don't understand why an existing, an existing standing committee doesn't have this as part of their responsibility, because existing committees are not going away during this time period. So again, it's one more workload for a group of people to work on something. And I appreciate what Lynn said about, you know, previously it was drafted, then I said, okay, here's a committee that can take a look at what was drafted and figure that out. I would be a big proponent this year of doing things as easily as what works for people as possible, because our workload has been literally insane. And so to ask people to have a whole nother set of committee meetings that might go on for several weeks, I think is asking a lot. I also think that we have some pent-up desire to change some of the evaluation process, right? We talked about that last year. But yet we can't do that this year, because we simply don't have the bandwidth to do it this year. So I'm in favor of whatever seems simplest, and then work on a start earlier next year, even though, who knows what our pandemic situation will be in the spring next year.
Are there other comments at this time? Dorothy?
Yeah, I'm remembering the process now. I was on that committee. And I remember as we sat as a full-town council, reading all the little steps, I thought, "We should just have those steps as things we think about, but we shouldn't answer yes, no, whatever for each one of them." And the, the process could be so much simpler. I mean, I think we, we did a good job of laying out all the things we can think of. We might want to add a few more. But the, the nitty-gritty of, of going over each one was, I think, redundant, really redundant. But within categories, we could discuss them. And in our discussion, we could bring up the different items that are in that category, but not necessarily have to put an evaluation on all of them.
Additional comments? All right, so what, yes, Kathy?
Yeah, I had separately, earlier today, sent Lynn a note. I just want to build on what Dorothy was referencing to. We, we talked about having a much simpler evaluation form, format that would have the big categories with some kind of rating, easy, and then a comment thing that you could make, say why you thought all of this, but not having to go over every line, so it would be short. We wouldn't go through everything we put and, and make it easier, and then have some space toward the end of it that would give you, give you more free rein to talk about any issues that had come up and other things. We don't have such a form. I would be perfectly willing to, to draft it and make it short and sweet, if we, if that would be helpful, because I wasn't sure with this process as proposed, if we get the performance goals as we set them up. I, I wasn't sure what we were supposed to do if we, right now, if we got the performance goals as we set them up. And then, my memory is we tried to keep it to three pages, and it kept being four pages, five pages. Are we supposed to write something on every line? So I think we just need some guidance that's really simple, that's not very rigid on, on what to be, what should we do? So is it just, yeah, so that's just the major, a major area.
Right. So let me just mention that, Kathy, I think you were on, also on that committee, and we discussed changing the form, which I have not messed with yet, so that people could do individual comments under each, but they and they could, and they could do an overall rating for each of the broad six or seven categories and a broad set of comments, so that they would not be put in a situation we all found ourselves in last year, which was, my God, when will this end? So it's like, I totally agree with our, that, that was, that was a discussion of the Goals Committee last year, this past fall and into the end of December. And I think that that guidance is still absolutely true. I want to, I want to separate these. We're having two conversations. One is about the evaluation. Yes. Another one is about setting the goals. It was for the setting the goals that we had the committee. In terms of formats for the evaluation, I will be more than happy to take comments and come up with a format that is much, much more user-friendly. And be glad to do that. Sarah, you have your hand up.
So I just wanted to bring up that it is a job evaluation. And however you look at it, it's, it's, and it's to help guide Paul, because you don't know if you're doing a good job or if you're hitting the marks that the people who are hiring you want you to hit, unless they're actually written out. So I would rather that we weren't vague, that we were more specific. And I'm okay with however we decide to try to do this with ease this year, but we're gonna, who knows how many of us are going to be gone after another year and not quite a half? And I would like to actually maybe take up what Alyssa said, and maybe we do give this entire, like, evaluation process, how we're going to do it, and also think about how we all set goals for Paul together, and start that now with a committee, so that we actually leave something permanent for the next council that comes in. And that's it.
You're suggesting a committee that tackles this?
Or we just give it, like Alyssa said, maybe it's part of a committee's charge. And I'm not saying for sure, let's do this, but it seems like if we already have committees formed, then it might make sense for one committee to just start working on it. Obviously, the whole town council would have to, you know, then look at something and reflect on it. It's all of our decisions. But at least we'd have the, when the, because look how fast this year went, right? And we're all still now looking at this whole situation, saying, oh, yeah, I remember how hard that was last year. So I just think that maybe even if we, you know, wrote it into one committee, they could just start working on it now. And maybe we just set a timeline. But that's me spitballing this late.
Darcy?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind people that originally the evaluation was in the, in OCA. And then, then it was removed, so. And all the different appointment functions got farmed out to different committees. And so, I mean, it's possible that part of it could be in one committee, and part of it, you know, the evaluation could be in one committee, and the goals could be in another committee. And once we have a format of how we're doing it generally, it, you know, year after year, it won't be as hard. You know, we won't be reinventing the wheel. And, yeah, I would be for doing that this year. But I don't know what kind of support I have for that.
Alyssa?
Just super briefly. So part of why it was so hard this year, of course, is it was different for all of you who weren't previously on the select board, right? So for Andy and I, the idea, the evaluation wasn't that complicated, although Andy's never been a big fan of the form we used. The form we used isn't the form we used, meaning the select board used this clunky old table slash Excel spreadsheet, but it meant you could flip back and forth between it. The Google The Google Doc, the Google form was a disaster. That was part of the problem. And so we have not only the, how do we rate things and are we kind of grouping it in a general sense, or are we going point by point by point? Or is our problem with the execution of the form we used? That had never been done that way before and there was a reason for that and it didn't work well for us. So part of what the, that's part of what has to be dealt with too. And so, and that was not discussed with the council at all as to whether or not we think that that execution of the actual filling it out would work. So I, I don't have an easy answer, which is why I'd like to see a group work on it longer term to kind of figure out and then talk about all the town employee evaluation, right? We've always talked about how that doesn't work out quite the way we planned for it either. But to do anything, this year, I'm willing to cut corners, so to speak, in terms of making it go faster. But I think we have to recognize that we have a number of different issues here and it's not just the form itself. The evaluation goals have to be translated into the form. You can't just have a set of goals and then have the form say something else. And you can't have the form be that weirdo Google Doc that we had last year. So we learned from that. But we need to make it easier for ourselves to fill out and that made it much, much harder for me to fill out.
I think it was actually a survey, but I will look into other ways of doing this survey. Yes, George?
I like the idea of using existing bodies. If the council wants to have someone's look over both the, look over both elements of the evaluation and the goals. We can simply refer it to a body or to two separate bodies that are already exist. If that will help. I agree with the idea of trying to make it as simple as possible. It sounds like we do want someone or someones to look at it and give some sort of input back to the council before we move forward. We could leave that with Lynn. That's certainly an option. The other it seems to me is simply to refer one or both of these to a specific body and asking them to get back as obviously quickly.
The only thing that we're now faced with is that, and I know this is an unusual summer, but some people are still planning to either stay at home vacations or whatever, is we try to do the staff and the committee chairs and the committees and the public starting this coming week. The form for the council is not that fast. So I just want to point out that one of the reasons why this comes up at this point is because of always wanting to do it earlier in the summer, if you will. Dorothy?
I like George's idea of having a committee do it, but I'd be a lot happier if it was GOL than TSO. Has so much they have to do right now and we're still figuring out how we're doing it. So I, I don't think we could probably handle this responsibility at this time. Otherwise, an ad hoc committee.
Okay. I'm, I'm open. Whatever you want to do. Sarah?
So yeah, I, for some reason, I guess I just blocked out OCA in general after last week, but so it did belong in that charge. So maybe we do want to think about where it would fit in the current standing committees because I would think that this is something that any town council would want to have a committee either refining or at least making sure that forms and everything were going out on a timeline. So I guess maybe we think about where it makes the most sense and, and do it. I don't know if we want to add something else on because it's still more like separate time for all of us. And as somebody who's on a committee and is a liaison and is now an ECAC, you know, I'd rather have it in a committee, even if it was my own than another subcommittee or a subcommittee. Oh, and I just wanted to say too, that the goals, you can't really separate them. That's what Alyssa said and I think it's true. I don't think you could separate those two out. I, I would probably want to have one committee be working on both. I think it would make more sense.
So George, are you willing to put this under the 48 hour rule? On GOL? George, you have your hand up.
Sorry. Yes, I would be willing to put it under the 48 hour rule. But my colleagues on GOL may wish to speak on this as well. But if there is a committee that the council wants to send this to, it would seem to me, speaking personally, that GOL would probably be that committee. But others may have other thoughts.
Are there other thoughts? Mandy, Joe?
Yes, I would want clarity on what the committee is supposed to do. Are we drafting goals or are we not drafting goals? Are we coming up with the evaluation form or not? Like I, I'm, I'm, at this point, I think the referral, if, if the referral is fine in that sense, but I would want definite clarity on what, if it goes to GOL or TSO or wherever it's going, what that committee is supposed to do and when they're supposed to return a product.
It's an outstanding set of questions. Dorothy?
Well, I think the answers have been given in this discussion. Start with the work that was done with the Goals Committee. Take that, take the form. Alyssa's right. You've got to work, the goals must match the form. Start with that and look at it and then go over some of the different alternatives we discussed and see how to refine it. I would say starting from scratch would be really silly and a waste of time. We've got the, you've got the raw material and then the tricky part is that somebody has to technically figure out how we're going to, you know, how the form works. But I would just say, what we've got, use them common sense.
Okay, because I, could I suggest that this be referred to GOL who will provide guidance on the evaluation process? Including the development of the councillor's feedback form. And develop a set of goals to be brought to the council. Or proposed goals to be brought to the council. And so basically what I'm suggesting is that the GOL will work on using this calendar and I actually am going to not, I'm going to suggest we not do very much to change anything with regarding collecting community input and staff input. And that we focus on the councillor evaluation and the, the actual form. And that the, and that they also work on the goals. Darcy?
I, I actually think the most important piece is the, 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 the letter combining all of the councillor comments. And so if that could be done in some kind of group process in GOL, I think that would be good. And you know, if it ends up that everything just gets farmed out to you anyway, Lynn, because you're on GOL. You know, I, I'm, you know, my, the goal is to, you know, have more voices involved. And to have it done in, in a group process. So I would say make sure that that is included. These, you know, there's a number of things that just are going to be done by the town staff anyway, right? All these things in the first week.
Anything that we don't ask them to do.
Right. But I can't see the bottom of this. Could you scroll down possibly so that we can see the bottom?
Mandy, Joe, you have your hand up.
I would not support assigning the compilation of the letter to a group. Because once you do that, as, as Darcy sort of indicated, it would be done in a group, so it would be done in an open meeting. But that means that all of the evaluations must come out before that open meeting and we generally don't send those evaluations out until on this schedule, it would be the 17th distributed exactly at five. So once you say the letter is going to be compiled in GOL, the newspaper and everyone has every councillor's evaluation prior to that GOL meeting, when that letter starts being drafted. And that would be required to be well early, wherever that is, probably before Tuesday, August 4th. And in order to be done at one or two GOL meetings or more. So I would not support sending the actual compilation of the letter to a committee.
Kathy?
One of the things Mandy asked for, which I think is right, she asked for being as explicit as possible what they're supposed to do. And I'm just looking at this. It includes a draft of the FY21 goals by X date. We've got some very specific short pieces. So I agree with what Mandy just said. I don't think a group write a composite letter is a good idea. But it's, it's already, we have to get something out to the council, all of us. We respond to in some way. That's task number one and it needs to have a due date on it so it can go out to all of us. And then the other big task is an initial draft of what are the goals for the coming year so that we don't hand over performance goals for a 12 month period with only five months left in the year. I mean, we're, we're trying to catch up. So there are some, there, there's some explicit dates here that if we send it to GOL, there's a fair amount of work that needs to be done. Two different pieces with, with, with dates set on them.
Dorothy?
Okay, I, I think that I have two different points. First, we have to use common sense. I'm remembering now what Lynn did last year. That's not, it's, it's ridiculous. We cannot keep piling on work on top of people. We are working too hard as it is and the, the time is short. So I think that you have to say, this is what we did. Here's the papers and documents. How can we simplify this within the time? Because we don't have unlimited time and our, our, our schedule seems to be throwing things really on top of each other. The other part that we're not talking about, and that was the part that was poorly done last time, was the getting comments from the community and from the staff. And there's, you know, we don't quite know why, but we just really didn't get many comments. That's something that perhaps TSO could look into because outreach is part of their title. Trying to thinking out if, are there any things that aren't too complex, any ways of increasing participation in the non-council members is part of the evaluation? Because that was just very, very skimpy last time. But for the, for us, it's got to be simpler than it was last time. It cannot be some burden that has people staying up and not sleeping for two weeks. It's just, we're, we're getting crazy. So I'm just urging us to simplify.
Dorothy?
Yeah, I guess I would just say, since I, I personally think the most important piece is the, the cover memo is that I think that there would be a way to deal with the problems, the open meeting law problems by either, you know, assigning it to two people to, to write the draft and, and executive committee, yes, no?
There is no such thing. No.
I, once you have more than one councillor, you've got a meeting.
Not if it's a one-time deal, right?
That's not true.
Not if it's not an official subcommittee.
It would be an official subcommittee because you just said that.
Well, it's not a non-official subcommittee.
There's no such thing.
No such thing. Alyssa, any further comments?
So I just want to, I mean, beyond the fact that I will fight anyone who says that we did, we did anything poorly. We didn't do anything poorly. We didn't get a great response rate. That doesn't mean that there was anything wrong with our process in terms of the actual forms, for example. But they need to be looked at and they need to be looked at by a committee that has time to do this more than, oh my God, we have to send them out next week, which is literally what the position were. So they're good enough to go out this week in terms of the email that goes out to the committee chairs. It's good enough to put out the staff evaluation. We wish we would have done it differently this year, but guess what? We didn't. So we're going to send the same form out, which was fine and at least is comparable to last year and unfortunately probably won't get a lot of response. And we need to be clear on who's doing the goals, which is going to go to a committee. The form does not need to come back to the town council to be reviewed. It certainly didn't last year and ended up with the mess that I didn't like. But the form is just the goals turned into something. And given the short period of time we have, we don't need to believe that. The goals need to be drafted by somebody. That's a committee. The form needs to be created by somebody. That will just be the form because it's the form that's based on the goals that already exist. It's not new. And then we need to have the future conversation, which maybe GOL can also have about, oh, well, when you consider the email that has to go out, this piece, this piece, this piece, this is who should work on it over the course of the next year and just make it simple for ourselves now.
Alright, I'd like to make a motion. I move that the evaluation and the, the evaluation be referred to GOL for the purpose of guiding the process through this year, including the development of a format that is councillor friendly for our responses. And to draft the goals to be brought back to the council on, in time for our meeting on August 17th. Is there a second?
Second.
Are any further discussion? Evan?
Sorry to be a pain. Can I just ask that the motion be reread?
Athena, can you reread the motion?
Sure. That the evaluation be referred to GOL for the purpose of guiding the process for the year, including the development of a format that is councillor friendly and draft goals to be brought to the council in time for the August 17th meeting.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further comment? Alright. Then.
I'm so confused. I don't get it.
Darcy, you have your hand up.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to make a quick comment that I felt like the, the goals, the ad hoc goals committee that existed for FY20 was successful because it combined a number of people that had different interests and expertise. Shawnee was on it and had her interest in economic development and I was on it and I had interest in sustainability and so on. Anyway, I, obviously whatever GOL does is going to come back to the full committee for, for comments. I just, wanna make sure that the committee takes into consideration all those different interest areas.
I just got lost on the dates because I'm sorry, I know Athena just read it and I totally got lost. So I get the fact that it's fine if we don't have draft goals until the middle of August. It's fine if we don't do goals until November. It's not ideal, but it's fine. What we need is we need a form. We can't get a form on August 17th. We're supposed to have completed it before August 17th. Really lost about where we are on just.
Alyssa, we already have this year.
Well, right. So why are we talking about a form? Well, right, so why are we talking about a form? We're talking about a form for this year, which is not going to be the same as the form last year, so therefore it is not existing yet. Because the thing we had, that was the user-friendly part, but like, we have to fill it out, so we have to get it before August seventeen. We're not waiting till August seventeenth to fill it out.
And the motion is that G O L will guide that process and look at and make sure we have a friendly form.
But when are we filling out the form? That, like, when are we Right, so we don't have the Okay, somebody want to tell me the date again that they're going to get us a form by? Because it's not going to be August.
It's in your calendar.
Then why did we specify a date for the goals but not a date for the form?
When we can add a date to the form. Let's see, I'm just trying to find the date for the form.
Counselor evaluation form would be sent out by July eighth, according to the calendar. And the counselors have to fill it out by August fourth.
Right, so somebody's got to create it.
Right.
And we'll have it in our hands by by July.
It, the calendar initially says that the email is sent to the town counselors with individual counselor evaluation form is somewhere between June sixteenth and June twenty-ninth. The initial one.
I'm just trying to see when G O L's supposed to have the form done by. I guess I don't care if they don't care, so it's fine.
To me twice. Maybe even three times. Further discussion, Darcy?
Oh, no, I meant to lower my hand.
There's a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Okay, so I'm sorry, I just want to make sure. So I know that we're trying to make sure that we take care of this year, but I also wanted to just make sure that we are putting this in, if it's going to be G O L, that it's going to become part of their charge, so that we're not put in this situation again next year, that somebody's slowly working on making, doing the deadlines and getting things ready, starting now for next year. It's just that we're thinking about doing that, because I, that's, I think, more important to me.
That's not part of this motion, but it does sound to me like G O L needs to look at its charge. And bring it back to the council.
Okay, thanks.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, then we're going to begin with Shane.
Yes.
Driver.
Yes.
Steinberg.
Yes.
Worts.
Yes.
Baumelm.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
DeAngelis.
Yes.
Umont.
Yes.
Reese, yes, Hanaky.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
And Ross.
Yes.
And Ryan.
Yes.
Zero zero on the referral. All right, we're moving on to zoning bylaw amendment process. Mandy, Joe, do we need to do this now, or do we want to defer to next?
Do not need to do it tonight.
Okay, we'll move it to the twenty-second, twenty-ninth. And then the next thing is this is a discussion regarding policing, and I've asked Paul, Shawnee, and Pat. Several of us were including in the audience at the recent discussion with the police chief and staff, the town manager, and residents. But Shawnee and Pat were actually in the panelist group, as was Paul. So, Shawnee and Pat?
Shawnee is going to share our reflection.
Okay.
Sure. So I just want to start off by saying, I personally found it very hopeful to see the honesty that and discussions that we had, the commitment shared by the chief of police, by a town manager, to continue to listen and to do better. So I don't know, I mean, there were nine of us counselors there, so I don't know in how much detail I want to go. Paul has already shared a video that people can see if they want to listen into the dialogue, because I think it was a really good first conversation to be had. There were fifty residents, there were nine counselors, the chief of police, Captain Ting was there, and and maybe I can just highlight some of the things that we learned, just in a couple of really good points that emerged. Like, for example, the first thing we that that the chief of police shared was about the extensive role they're playing in handling many more situations than they used to. And so, you know, there was an agreement that maybe we can look at our budgets and how we can align our local budgets to address some of these needs. The other thing that was really interesting is that none of, even though there are a lot of trainings and implicit bias that everyone goes through, and that was really great, that we have a lot of policies in place for de-escalation, the use of force. But there is no training that provides a history of policing. And even the chief of police was interested in having more training from non-police staff. So there were a lot of, like, really good ideas that came up like that, or needs that were expressed and shared. So, like I said, that was just the first of the meetings. Gesit Hayak Kousi, who initiated this meeting along with Dr. Shabazz and Dr. Shabazz. They sent a little feedback, I mean, just after the meeting, so they kind of reflected that this is the first, and they'd like to continue this conversation. They specifically requested for having a town hall to give opportunity for the fifty-nine attendees to share their concern. So that's one of the things that Lynn, Pat, and I sort of did a little debrief afterwards. And we came up with some ideas, including having a facilitated meeting with the residents and the chief of police and our town staff. And we talked about maybe having a task force that with the diverse group of people, including some residents, town staff, and town counselors, to look at the systemic issues, because this goes beyond policing issues. This is looking at, you know, all our domain, maybe using this as an opportunity to look at the different sectors in our community that where racism and inequities exist, like the schools, the development areas, or housing. I mean, so these are really, like, it's an opportunity to study all of these different issues, to look at the data in hand, but also listen in to the lived experiences of people. And so, as of now, what we are, what we are proposing is maybe having a special town council meeting to discuss this on maybe June twenty-second or July sixth. And really would like to hear from everyone else right now, what ideas you might have, and if Pat wants to add on something to that.
Well, a couple of the other things that came up, and one of them was some kind of citizens review. Which, you know, there is no civilian oversight of our department. And I did not get a feeling that that, the department would be resistant to that, which was a really good thing to hear. And so I just wanted to add that, but I'd love to hear from other people who were virtually there.
That's what I didn't do.
Conversation. Raise your hand if you'd like to speak.
I lost the raising the hand thing.
Oh, okay.
Find that, when I click participants, it doesn't come up now. Yes, I want to second what Pat said. The chief made it very, very clear that he, his department, did not have opposition to some kind of civilian review. And I was thinking of it as kind of like an audit, I mean, just looking at seeing, have there been uses of force? Has there been any discipline problems? Are there areas that, you know, they think that they want to improve on? I felt it could be done in a friendly manner, because I don't think doing it in an unfriendly manner is going to get us very far. But I wanted to add another thing that I think would be useful. When I lived in Sunnyside, we had the Hundred and Eighth Police Precinct Community Meeting every month. And we went to it, and the police would open it, kind of like town council, with what things they were looking at, what problems were in the community, sometimes warning us of local frauds or whatever. And then residents could just stand up and ask their question or make a statement. And it was very friendly, productive, and it was part of, of what you did in that neighborhood. And I felt it kept a good climate, and it kept things from building up and boiling up. I also think that, I think Pat alluded to this, that in terms of really reaching out to the community, maybe some of these meetings should travel and go to different parts of the town, because after a while, you get used to who comes to town hall. You know, and it's, it's not that big a group of people. But to have a good, I mean, it seemed to me that the chief and Captain Ting were making it very clear they valued and wanted open and free conversation with the people of Amherst and did not feel in opposition, and welcomed the idea of working together with the community in a little more detail. So I thought it was a very positive meeting.
Sarah?
So I know that Pat talks a lot about coded language, and I think that it's important for all of us to sort of think about things that we say. And when we're talking about having people of color talk to white people about racism, racism isn't very friendly. And so, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that when you say I want to keep it friendly, it's, I feel like it's in some ways saying to people of color, make sure you stay in your lane. So I know that's not what Dorothy was saying, but I'm just saying that we need to be careful about how we phrase things.
That's right. Right on.
Are there other comments?
Put my hand up? I thought I did.
So, the hand-up function is not working? Kathy?
It's working.
No, it is working. I just couldn't make the participant thing go up, because I've got everybody's face on the screen, so I couldn't find it. I just, I was a listener, and one of the things, one of the exchanges I thought was, to build on Sarah's point, was the barriers people face when they want to register a concern. And a person who was leading the discussion listed a whole bunch of different ways that you might feel uncomfortable, or including a language barrier, but also a fear of authority. And the response was, we've never heard such a fantastic list. That was really important for you to list that out. And then the other was the types of training on how do we work on things in different ways, that the trainers we find are former police officers. We would, and we've reached out at different times, to UMass or Amherst College, for suggestions of other people, because we're totally open to thinking about different types of modules. So it was a very, it was a very open discussion of welcoming ideas, welcoming suggestions, welcoming concrete things, rather than, and the concrete list of barriers was stunning that was given, and everyone was nodding their head, no, yes. And then you think of personal stories, so I thought it was a healthy beginning. It was clearly just a beginning.
Darcy?
Yeah, I attended, and I really appreciate the fact that Shawnee and Gesit Haye organized it. I, Gesit Haye is actually doing outreach for the Energy and Climate Action Committee through the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Grant. And she has brought that same kind of energy to E C A C in, in the outreach that we're doing there, bringing community leaders into our task groups that are people of color that she has brought in. And she's doing individual one-on-one consciousness raising with members of the committee and leading a caucus of the, of the people of color community leaders that are going to be in our task group. So it's a, it's a whole new world of making the white members more aware of, of of just what's happening, you know, how, how, how thinking is changing.
George?
I, what struck me in listening to this, I listened to it on the, later, was how increasingly we are asking the police to deal with issues for which they're really aren't trained and probably could never be trained, but they are, in a sense, the ones who are the first responders. I'm thinking particularly of issues around homelessness, mental health. So I hope that whatever conversation goes forward, that people from that community, those in the mental health community, those who work with the homeless, will be involved, that this won't be focused simply on the issue of race, as important as that is. Because what I heard, at least what I heard from this discussion, was a real willingness on the part of the police department to engage in dialogue with the community, and also request for help. In a sense that, that in many cases, they find themselves tasked with things that really they're not suited for. And yet, they're the ones who have to deal with it. So I guess what I'm saying is, I hope this, I definitely heard a willingness for, for a lot more discussion, and I'm glad to hear it's going to go forward. I hope that this will also include members of the mental health community and those who work with the homeless as part of this discussion, because I heard, I thought very clearly that police department would, would like some assistance there.
Okay, so Evan, I'm going to take your question, then I'm going to ask that we shape, we shape the conversation a certain way, but go ahead, Evan.
So actually, George sort of beat me to it, but I just wanted to say that the thing that I left at the forefront of my mind when I left that conversation was what they said about how increasingly their calls are responding to non-criminal calls, especially things around mental health and homelessness. And, and I don't want to read too much into tone or try to interpret him, but it seemed like something that the chief was uncomfortable with, that that wasn't something that they hadn't originally envisioned their role as being, and was an area where he was certainly open to perhaps reimagining their role. And then I saw, as I'm sure many of you did, the announcement from the mayor of San Francisco yesterday, that they would be replacing police officers with trained professionals who would be unarmed to respond to non-criminal complaints around mental health, homelessness, neighbor disputes. And I hope that becomes a part of the discussion going forward, is who responds? And also, a big piece of this that I'm going to be pretty vocal about is, when does a response require the responder to have a firearm? Because I think that's going to be a big piece of this. When we are responding to noise complaints, when we are responding to traffic violations, does whoever's responding need a firearm on their hip? And so, who's responding, what their training is, and are they carrying, I think need to be important parts of the conversation.
So what I want the council to answer at this point is, all right, let me shape the question. There's responsibility that the town manager has to make sure that our police department and other first responders, because this also happens frankly with ambulance people. It could even happen with somebody from D P W, when somebody doesn't like how they snowplow. ambulance people, it could even happen with somebody from DPW when somebody doesn't like how they snowplowed. And I'm not being facetious. I mean, we get complaints about that all the time. So there's the responsibility of the town manager, but the real question before the council is, what do we want our role to be? And one of the suggestions that was thrown out was the idea of having a council meeting that would be more like a public forum, if you will. Another suggestion would be that there be some kind of task force formed or some kind of civilian review audit. And there, you know, any number of these things, for instance, particularly a task force might be something that's jointly done between the council and the town manager as a committee that we jointly appoint people to and have a jointly agreed to charge or whatever the case may be. But it's not a one-sided thing. It's not either the council is going to do this or the staff are going to do this. It's something that we have to do in a way that we're doing this together. Out of it may come some policies, our budgets, things that we want to see changed, but we're not at that point yet. So my question is, what is our next step? Dorothy, you have your hand up.
Okay, so the thing I've been thinking about is the question that has been brought up a number of times, which is when we, when we asked the, or when I was, I was a silent observer. When the chief was asked about going on mental health calls or whatever, he said he went with a trained member, an EMT. So my question, first question is, does the police officer need to go at all? And I, because I sometimes are saying, okay, let's take the, remove some responsibilities from the police department and put them on more social service-trained people. But then I thought, well, okay, but the police have a coverage thing and they're available in a way that, that many other people aren't available. I mean, they're available, they have 24-hour job schedules. So this question, which is really one that we can have some input in, but it's also one that is really experts in policing and mental health need to be giving guidance on, and I'm, Paul probably has some thoughts on this, is, is there a way to restructure some of the responsibilities of what the police do with people who would be adequately trained and available to come when needed? I mean, I read the police broader every week. It's interesting and quite amusing reading. And, you know, some people from some other big cities would say, oh, wow, you have such little problems. But their problems are people. They're going out for somebody who's yelling at somebody in the sidewalk. Somebody, somebody was piling leaves in the street for some reason. People are having an argument in their house. Most of the stuff that they do, the, the result is they told them to go on their way. All right, so they are keeping order of some sort. Maybe some of those cases, they didn't need to go on. Half the time, they say that they were, something was reported in a neighborhood and it turned out just to be two people walking home or that in fact, the suspicious person wasn't suspicious. All right. So isn't that really the use for our police? Is there a way of rescheduling, reorganizing first responders that would be better suited? I mean, I, I agree with Evan. No one with a gun should be going on all kinds of issues. If, have, I mean, almost all the recent murders that have taken place that are in the news right now are places where there was no need of anyone with a gun. You know, why do you need a gun to go tell a man, wake up and move your car or something? Not that I accuse our police of behaving that way, but is, Paul, are you, are you doing some rethinking of how to structure the policeman's job or is someone doing it?
Paul, I, I, I'd like to hear from you, but I really want this group to get to the issue of
What we're going to do.
Yep. We can't solve these problems sitting here tonight. We can all raise our thoughts, but what is our next step? Kathy?
I just wanted, Lynn, you, you said, is it a task for, what's a place to start? When we were looking at what some towns had put into their ability of their councillors to do, one thing was something called a dialogue, where it wasn't the council making a decision, but it was bringing in, bringing in people. And Evan's just mentioned San Francisco is going a route of trying to change the composition of a police force and think. So we could start with something as simple as a dialogue where people are bringing in ideas and it's a round table, it's not decision-making. And then figure out if we actually want, need a task force or something, because I think we need, we need buy-in, we need some thoughtful ideas, we need some, everybody is rethinking this, right? We're, we're, we're going to see communities, you know, this question of when do you need a trained police officer who has a certain kind of training and when do you need a different kind of person? Should one of them be in a pair with somebody else, you know, so that you don't know what the event? We can't, we can't answer those questions, but we could begin to have a discussion with some information. And then say, we, we want then the town manager and the police to come back with a recommendation of what, what we might think of doing, you know, because you can't turn on a dime either. I mean, we have some 50 FTEs working in our police department, which includes overtime, you know, I mean, we have to be thinking, what do we want a year from now? What do we want, where we can make changes? So dialogue might be a place to start if we didn't want to make a formal task force. But task forces usually are supposed to go out, do some studying and come back with a report. So that gives you a more of a timeline of getting, gathering information when the people who are starting it don't have a lot of information themselves.
Darcy?
I think that's a really good idea to have a community dialogue. My only worry would be that it would somehow undercut the the organizers, the community organizers and leaders who might want to do something on their own. But I think we could probably do both. I, I, I just would want to respect their wanting to have some kind of leadership role in organizing what happens. Next.
Shalini?
Yes, I think I really want to emphasize that we really need to listen, listen, listen right now and create opportunities for, for people to be heard. And I just heard from Gazit Haya too, and she also mentioned that there is such a desire to be heard right now. And I imagine that anything you can do to create opportunities to listen will be appreciated. And of course, when we are creating these opportunities, we're going to be working with the organizers initially and seeing how we can come together and work on that. The other thing I just wanted to also say was it feels like through these listening opportunities, we can also identify what's already in place. And then part of our work as councillors is to communicate that because most people don't know what, you know, what, what we're doing right. So let's share that with the community. And then I'm thinking in terms of short-term and long-term actions. And so there are some, out of these listening sessions, we may be able to identify some actions we can take right away. You know, like some things that are out there, like the eight con weight or just kind of see like what are some good best practices that we can put in place right away, but then also have a task force to look at things in a more systemic way and bring longer term. And that's going to take a longer time, I think.
Pat?
Uh, building a little bit on a couple of different things. One of the most important things I think we can do, and I learned this from the DPW community outreach that we started, was going to speak and speak to people directly throughout the community. And I know virtually that's a little tricky right now, but I think that there are ways that could figure out how to do that as members of the council to move out. But I think that, and so I do really want to see us develop some kind of task force. I'm not sure I like that, comfortable with those words, but the piece for me is as a white person, my starting point has to be the ways in which systemic racism has impacted my, my life in the sense of the reactions I have to people of color, the fears I have about people of color, the limitations I place on people of color. Until each one of us on the council begins to do that individually, but I not going to get anywhere. Or we'll get somewhere, but it won't be very far. It really seems to me that one of the things that this council would benefit from, and I don't know how to make it happen in terms of open meeting law, but we need to get together and work and, and in a dialogue between ourselves about these issues. As well as asking the community to participate in a dialogue. Otherwise, we're just collecting stories. And that's not enough. So I want a way for us to be in a facilitated situation where we're talking about systemic racism. I don't know. What?
Was there anything else, Pat?
Not right now, no.
Okay. Alyssa, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you. To try and not repeat things other people said. So collecting stories is truly very valuable, but definitely not enough. And having been just to part of that meeting, I'm eager for us to continue to express that we as a town council want to hear more from what different parts of the community want us to do. So absolutely, the people who organized that meeting, definitely. But also to hear from HRC, who are they hearing from? And to hear from other groups that we've heard from in the past, but are maybe not hearing from right now. Because there obviously is no monolith group that is responsible. So what can we do to be responsible to reach out and say, tell us more things about what you would like us to do? I would like us to, I know that feels soft in comparison to doing something like setting up the task force, but I really think the last thing we need right now is a task force that doesn't have a clear goal. And there might be a task force that is having a conversation about the different types of policing we were just talking about. But that's a future thing. So I wonder if what we could also look to is have the town manager come back with some suggestions. Obviously, he's been talking with staff. He's been talking with APD. And I know that Melrose is, for example, doing a thing where, you know, they were supposedly, and the report should come out soon, where they were looking within town hall at the procedures and policies and public interactions they had and saying, what could we do to promote racial equality and equity? I am sure that our employees have some great ideas. They've all been to various kinds of trainings. They've all had various interactions with the public. I'll bet they have plenty of pent-up ideas. It's just this crazy pandemic time. And so I would love to hear more from people who are doing the work and people who are experiencing the experiences to tell us what they want from us. So it's clear that we, but that we want to do something because it's kind of shocking, I'm sure, just like the rest of you. Even though we're not seeing our friends because of the pandemic, when we do talk to people, people are saying, what are you guys doing? And it's like, well, I don't know, what are we doing? And so being able to, to not just say, well, we're, I really appreciate that this got added to the agenda because we need to do something. But I think we sometimes jump right to, oh, well, let's have some speaker come in, oh, let's have this task force. I want to find a way to like, continue to reach out and the relationships that Shalini and Pat have already been building, that we're able to make that meeting. To say, what do you think we should be doing? What would be helpful to our community? Because we are in this wonderful place where we have town councils never dealt with this as a town council.
Paul, you have your hand up and it's long, long overdue to let you talk.
I know, I hate to prolong this, but I think you guys have, I mean, the energy from the council is palpable, so I appreciate everybody's engagement. I look at this, I mean, I think this is a unique opportunity and unique time for us. And I think that the council plays a really critical role because people, I feel, are looking, they need a venue to speak. And they want to speak truth to power. You and I are power. You know, we may not, we may think we're, oh, we're part of the community, but you are the biggest power in the town of Amherst right now. People need that place to be able to speak to you and to our police chiefs and leadership that way. I think we are, the way I, I think we're in a unique position. It's a conversation we've had multiple times every day. We're in a unique position because we have enlightened leadership with our, our police department. Progressive policies that we're very proud of. But the, the, the real experience of people is different from how we say how great we're want doing. So I think we need to hear more. We need to do what Pat said, we have to educate ourselves and, and take that responsibility as well. But when I think about what does the council do? You have a unique role in that you are, you can convene people. And if you say, we're going to be someplace to listen, people will come. And I think there were 50 people at a, on a moment's notice showing up at something that one councillor and an organizer put together and it was spectacular. And, and important. So that's, that's where I think, I, I think all those other things down the road, like, you know, we're looking at Eugene, Oregon, that they're, they have a different kind of model as well because of university town. There's lots of different places out there who are doing things differently. So I think all those conversations, but I think that first thing where we are in space right now is that people need to say what they, what they feel and they experience.
So is, one of the thoughts has been that we would hold some kind of council listening. I don't even want to say dialogue, but listening. And I mean, we, I, I just have to use the parallel that we went through this with 132 North Hampton Road. I was, you know, lining up a facilitator and so forth, and then the citizens said, no, that's not what they wanted. They wanted to just, you know, come and talk and present and so forth. So it really is, the issue is, what do we want to do, what format and what time? Dorothy?
I have an idea of one thing we could do. We could go to a black church in town. I, I don't remember the name of the one that, I guess it's Jackie Wallace, but I went to a number of events there. And just ask them if they want to have a meeting and we would come to listen, as Paul says.
Well, none of us are going anywhere at this point because we're still.
I know, but you know what? I'm getting, on this topic, I'm getting ready to say, let's do it with social distance. I really, I mean, I, I really feel people have to see you and they have to feel heard. And it's awfully hard to do that on a Zoom.
I agree. Mandy Jo?
If our goal is to listen, I bring back the Charter Commission. We just called them Listening Sessions. They were a meeting of the Charter Commission. They were held whether or not a full quorum was present. And the agenda, most of the time was frankly, to listen. There was almost never an actual presentation made by anyone on the commission. There was an opening statement by the chair who said, we're here to listen. And then we sat there for however long it was until people were done talking. If we had a quorum, we had minutes. If we didn't have a quorum, we still took minutes. We just didn't call the meeting to order. You know, because we weren't going to be transacting any business, we didn't actually have to technically have, even if we had a quorum, our, the town attorney had said we didn't technically have to call it as a meeting, but we chose to, to make sure it had that import that Paul was talking about. So maybe we don't have to find a specific thing in our rules or a specific thing in the charter. Maybe we can just say, we're having a listening session. We could call it a public forum under the charter or we could call it a working dialogue or whatever, or we could just say it's a listening session. My, my concern with putting it on the 22nd, and, and maybe I'm too concerned about this, is that it's too soon to ensure that everyone knows it's happening and to get schedules cleared to come. So I would definitely want to listen to, you know, Gazit Haya and the Doctors Shabazz to see if they believe that that is sufficient notice to, for people to come and talk. And if not, would July 6th be better? But I, I don't want to schedule something to a time period where people But I, I don't want to schedule something to a time period where people believe we rushed it and they don't have the ability to be able to get free to attend.
So what I'm hearing is the suggestion that we uh reconnoiter back with uh the people that Shalini and Pat uh were meeting with. Uh we try to select a date for listening. And um that's, that is appropriately far enough down the road that people get notice and can clear their calendars, but not so far that we're, you know, just pushing this off. That. Darcy. Darcy, you have your hand up.
Um I, I just would recommend that the, any meeting would be a format that was similar to, well, actually, no, not similar to the meeting that was already had. But an open public meeting where all attendees are visible on the screen. Because that would be much more welcoming and people friendly and egalitarian. For that type of meeting, I think we just have to have it wide open.
Could we do registration?
We, I, I think you could do registration. But just, you know, allowing everybody in so that they're all in the room.
Got that, yeah. Pat?
Basically, I was going to say something similar to that. I've been in several, recently several seminars. Dialogues where there have been over two hundred and fifty people, all visible. Um and but the people running the meeting are controlling what's on. And I think it's, it would be critically important for us to speak to each other.
Oh, and I also wanted to just highlight that there is an HRC uh meeting this Thursday on eight, eighteen June at six P M. That if counselors want to attend that. So there are other avenues that we could be attending also.
So in order for us to continue on with our agenda, which we still have some things to do. I'm going to suggest that I will get back with Pat and Shalini. We will talk with the people that originally pulled this last meeting together, see if we can find a time and a date. And the council will use its power to convene. But in this case, it's power to listen. Okay? All right, Dorothy.
I would suggest two dates. And council members do not feel, should not be made to feel they have to all go to both of them. But when there's two dates, you're going to get maybe different people and it would be, could be good.
I like that. Okay. All right, um can we move on? All right, we're on to the um town counselor, town manager appointments. And uh I'm going to ask. This actually went to T S O, so um at this point. Darcy, let's pick back up with you.
Are we talking about the list of reappointments?
Yes, the ones that you did two weeks ago. It's the Agriculture Commission, et cetera.
Okay, so yes, we have a, we have a list of a number of different appointments to boards and committees that were done. The reappointments that were to expire on June thirtieth, so.
Get that memo up.
Oh, I just lost mine. There we go. So um yeah, there, this, we had little discussion about it. We voted unanimously for the appointments and for the recommendation of the town council to approve them. And I would be glad to read the motion if we're ready. So it is a motion to approve the following town manager reappointments under Charter Section two eleven B for terms expiring on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. The act to the Agricultural Commission, Masood Hohimi and David Machowski. To the Affordable Housing Trust, Sedonia Ferrera. To the Board of Assessors, Richard Morse, to the Council on Aging, Gregory Bascom and Tim Neal. To the Design Review Board, Erica Zikos, to the Historical Commission, Janet Mark Card and Hetty Startup. To Leisure Services and Supplemental Education Commission, Youssef Fadel. To the Munson Memorial Building Trustees, Claudia O'Brien. To the Public Art Commission, William Kazin. To the Water Supply Protection Committee, Christina Kian Free and Jack Jemsek. And for terms, uh terms expiring on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. To the Resident, Residence Advisory Committee, Keisha Dennis, Constance, Constance Kruger and James Pestre.
Is there a second? Mandy Jo, you have your hand up, but is it to make a second?
It is not to make a second.
Is there a second?
This is Andy, I'll second.
Okay, now, Mandy Jo.
It's late. I was going to ask to um split out the Historical Commission. Instead of splitting it out, I'm just going to state my statements now, um so that we can just take one vote because it's late. My vote will be an abstain. From the whole set, so the Historical Commission has money, much more power than some of us may think it does or may realize it does. It has the power to institute a demolition delay for twelve months on a property if it determines that that property is a significant structure. And that this demolition of that structure would be a detriment to the historical or architectural assets in town. And that sounds all well and good until you actually read the bylaw. And in reading the bylaw, I realized that nearly any structure, no matter how old or how young, could be deemed a significant structure because of how the bylaw is written. A structure that is five years old, that is placed on a main highway, can be deemed to have geographic significance because it is a landmark or a visual landmark in the neighborhood. The, the wording might not be exactly that way, but, but I am concerned about the makeup of the committee as a whole and some of the votes the committee as a whole has made. I am concerned about the bylaw itself, and I thank the town manager for suggesting a meeting, and I had a productive meeting with a number of staff members today about the bylaw itself, about potential revisions to it. Um but I am concerned in some of the meetings I watched and some of the minutes I've read that some members um may be using the bylaw improperly. Um in that because you can, as I told staff today, essentially drive a truck through it and deem nearly anything significant structure. Um that if you don't like, that I fear that some members of the commission have been coloring their desire to institute a demo delay or not by what might go up there and what the proposal to go up there is and why the demolition is occurring. Um so I'm using my time here as we have to deal with appointments and approval of appointments to not agree with the Historical Commission appointments, not to make it about any one person on the Historical Commission, but I think the commission as a whole might be broken partly because of the bylaw itself. But partly because of training. There are no definitions in the bylaw and anyone can interpret them anywhere they are. And because of that, I'm, I'm using this to bring that to the attention of the manager and to the members of our council to see if there is something we can do because instituting a demolition delay can really serve the purpose of harming economic development in town. Um and so if we're going to leave the bylaw the way it is, I think we need to look much more closely at who the appointments are to see whether those appointees espouse the same desires that we do in a way that we look at Planning Board or Z B A as, as Alyssa Brewer said earlier today about certain appointments when we were talking about a letter to the Z B A. So, so that, that's it. I will, instead of asking to separate out Historical Commission, I will abstain from all of the votes because of that, but I wanted to bring that to the attention of everyone and particularly the town manager.
Kathy.
I wouldn't have thought of this at all, Mandy, if you hadn't just mentioned demolition delay, but I, I don't know about the composition of the committee per se or their training. But uh in District One, I know of at least one family, and this was not an issue about postponing development. But for whatever reason, um a barn that was falling apart hit this delay, and because of it, they couldn't even insure the property. No one would write insurance. And if a child walked into this barn, they were at risk of having something fall on them. So there is also, I think, a training or a need, thinking about the consequences for property owner of using this. So it sounds to me, I don't know exactly, exactly anything about the people, but it sounds to me we need to revisit what, what this clause should mean, could mean, and how it gets interpreted. Because this was, it cost them a lot of money because what they wanted to do is tear, tear it down because it was unsafe. And it wasn't that old, you know, this, this was a, as someone said, well, anything that is earlier than nineteen sixty is historical or whatever it was, but boy, this, this is a eyesore, not an emblem, but so I think you, you brought a different issue to our attention, so thank you for it.
Are there any other comments at this time? Shalini.
Yeah, I also want to just acknowledge Mandy Jo's work in bringing this to our attention, and does this mean we can remove this particular vote? Are we going ahead with leaving the Historical Commission appointments today?
Options is to separate out the historical appointments separately. Um Mandy Jo, I believe that was your, initially your intent.
That was in my initial plan, but um instead I am not going to request that. Instead, I'm just going to abstain from the entire vote.
Is there any other que- Okay. So the motion's been made and seconded. Pat, please. Get your hand up.
I was just going to say, I would like to, um, I have not. Thank you, Mandy Jo, for I would like to remove uh the Historical uh Commission, Community Appointment, Commission appointments. And move ahead with the other recommendations.
Right, so I'm going to treat this as a consent agenda, and that is that if one counselor asks to separate out one of the committees, we will do so and proceed with the others as uh the motion has been read.
I am asking we remove the Historical Commission appointments.
So we're going to separate them off from this at this time, okay? Darcy.
It, doesn't it seem like, um, I mean, these are two separate appointments to the Historical Commission. It seems like only whoever is being objected to should be. I mean, why should we prevent the other person from being appointed? I, I, that, that doesn't make sense.
Point, we can also move this off to another meeting and find out and when we have more time. So we just take that committee, people continue to serve, and we'll bring it back on a future near agenda. So that we don't have to try to resolve that issue tonight. That's what I'm suggesting. Uh George?
Well, the initial sponsor withdrew. And I also feel that we're, it's somehow singling out two individuals where the issue seems to be more with the bylaw and its vagueness and um issues of, of lack of definition and clarity. It seems the issue is more with the bylaw than it is with the individuals who are tasked with carrying it out. Um I share Mandy's concern of how I feel at times this might have been misused or even abused. But I think um singling out these individuals seems inappropriate. Uh unless someone has some concrete argument they want to make that uh these individuals have been egregious in not fulfilling their responsibilities. Otherwise, I think we should let this just go as it is and instead pursue uh the larger and I think more important question of the bylaw itself and whether it really says what we want it to say.
Okay, so I'm going to um just state the following. We've already had one counselor who was asked to separate out a committee. We can actually delay the vote on that committee to a future meeting. But proceed with the rest of these votes without getting into individuals or the bylaw and bring that, bring the bylaw back as a separate discussion and bring the committee back as a separate discussion. So the issue of it being separated out has already happened. We can bring that back to a vote tonight for the, that commission or not. Steve?
Yeah, so, well, first I object to breaking out that particular group. I think we should vote for this as a block. The, the Historical Commission is a political body. They're not working with science. They're working with basically the information that they have before them. And so I, I am certainly aware of controversial decisions that they've made, but they're doing their job. They're doing due diligence. We may not like that. I don't think, I, but I, I've never seen anything egregious that any member of the Historical Commission has done, including the incumbents. So I would object to not taking this vote tonight.
I'm sorry, was that me?
Yes.
I understand the sentiment behind splitting it out. I appreciate what Mandy Jo did to save us time, and now, of course, we're not saving time anymore. Is that um I agree with everything George said and understanding, as Lynn also stated, that these people are going to keep serving anyway. So if we're trying to punish them, which is literally the only way to read that, then that's what we do. If you're going to pull them out and then vote on them separately and then that way have a several abstentions because that's fine, but it doesn't make any sense to postpone them to another night, whether it's a big postponement nuclear action or not, because they're going to continue serving whether you do anything or not. So I would um not do, I would not separate them out, or if you have separated them out already and can't take that back, then I would go ahead and vote on them tonight as well. The vote total may just be different.
The way we treated this was consent agenda. If one counselor asked it to be separated out, we do so. We did that. So we are back to the original slate that is here minus the Historic Commission. Historical Commission. Dorothy.
I agree that it would be not very unfortunate to set, to single out this committee or any members of it. And I know that at least one of them is very new. Um I have been paying attention to these demolition delays for a number of years because I didn't know what they meant. It's a clearly, it's been established practice in this commission. So I think that the issue is the charge of the commission and looking at that, which many people have mentioned. So I would support voting the whole slate or none. But the idea of stripping out one committee is very punitive and I think very misguided. Um this pro, this thing of demolition delay with different barns and whatever, it's been going on for ten years, at least since I've been here. I've been paying attention to it. So I, I didn't know what it was, so, so I thought it was interesting. So I would say we should vote the slate in and then deal very seriously with the commission's um bylaw.
Here's the dilemma you've placed me in. One counselor has asked to separate out, and as on a consent agenda, it then gets separated out and is not debatable, nor does it need a second. We can still vote on it tonight, but it would be voted separately. Pat?
I withdraw that uh idea. So we're back to the full slate.
All right. All right. We're back to the original motion. Is there any other discussion? All right, then, the motion is the complete slate as you see it on the screen. And we begin with Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Sarah Schwartz.
Hi.
Sarah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Shalony Baumel.
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer.
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis.
Yes.
Darcy Dumont.
Yes.
Lynn Griesmer is an abstain. Mandy Jo Hanneke.
Abstain.
Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
Evan Ross.
Yes.
George Ryan.
Yes.
Votes eleven for, none against, and two abstentions, and it passes. Okay, we now have to move to the elementary school building committee. I sent out an email. Um, many people, um, responded. I sent you a, I, in your, in your, I'm finding my own memo. In your packet was a memo, and it listed eight counselors. Okay? We need to get to the point that we have recommended to counselors. I'm going to make your lives easy. I'm taking my name off the list. It's not because I wouldn't like to do that, this, it's not because I don't feel I'm qualified, it's just that I enjoy being president of the council and can't take this on right now, too. And there's many other qualified people. Pat DeAngelis, do you have your hand?
Yes, I do. Um, I'd like to remove myself. I was hoping that my educational background would be, uh, valuable to the committee, but I have a feeling that, uh, people more versed in finance would be helpful on it, so I'm going to withdraw my name.
Are there any other people whose name I missed when I came up with the list? Are there any other people who would like to add their name to the list?
Lynn, can you just have him scroll to the name list so we can see it? Right now, it's, um, thank you.
It's not, that's the charge. We're actually moving to the memo, which is dated June fourteenth, twenty twenty. Yes, that one, and move down to the list, please. There we go.
Thank you.
So the list has been narrowed to six. They are Alyssa Brewer, Darcy Dumont, Mandy Jo Hanneke, Kathy Shane, Steve Schreiber, and Andy Steinberg. The way the charge reads, there should be one person from finance and then one person at, from the council at large. That does not exclude that that person can also be from finance. It just means that one of the people has to be from finance. So I'm going to suggest the following process. We're going to have, first of all, discuss the desired qualities for this, choosing this person, what we are looking for. Uh, what do we think is important, uh, to have represented what was supposed to happen with the select school committee, but really didn't, uh, given that eight people vying for it, this may be easier to accomplish. So that was just a side comment. Then you're going to make statements, the six of you, and then we're going to have a poll where, um, or who you think should be on from finance, and then we're going to have a second one after that where we basically say, who else would you like to vote for? And when we go down, we just do state the names, okay? So what are, what are some of the characteristics people feel should be included in counselors we select for this purpose? I will start out by saying, I, first of all, I think finance is important. I think procurement is important. I think that, um, being able to listen to different voices and represent them back to the council is important. Dorothy? Can't hear you, Dorothy.
Thank you. Uh, at some meeting recently, there was a clear statement, which I cannot reproduce, that said, the school committee feasibility, this committee, building committee, will not be working on this. It will be working on that. And that statement, I'd, I'd love to have it repeated exactly what, so before we talk about qualities, that we know what is doing and what it's not doing.
This is, this committee does not work on the program. The school committee is in charge of deciding the program. This committee is about the building. That will fit the program that the school committee sides. Essence, that was the state. Oh, do you have a better way you'd like to state that? Okay. Kathy?
Um, in addition to what you listed, Lynn, I, I think listening and working well with people is, is going to be critical from the points of view. Um, my understanding of this is both you've got to be willing to get up early in the morning to get to the meetings. But it's, uh, there's a volume of work to this, um, that will be ranging from trying under- to understand all the nuances of the options that are being discussed, uh, to when it gets nearer to some initial decisions being made, being willing to look at, um, complex documents, read them, think about them and ask questions. So it's both finance skills, but, uh, stick-to-itiveness around, um, a lot of work. So it's got to be eyes wide open that this is not, um, going to be a quick read on some of this before you get to the meeting.
Okay. Other characteristics, Steve Schreiber?
Okay, so unmute. So I think probably the most and one of the most important qualities is to not, for the committee members to themselves, not be the experts, but basically be able to listen to experts, listen to the community, synthet- synthesize those, to know what they don't know. And to, basically humility, to not know everything, but to understand what they, what they don't know. To be invested in the public schools through your own actions, I think is important.
Okay, Mandy Jo?
I think we need someone who's well-versed in finance, um, because, but, but what I mean by that is someone who questions and is willing to question expenditures and keeps this, the building itself in mind as to how much things might cost and starts asking those questions. Whether that's digging into the guidelines about how big rooms should be and stuff like that, and sizes and stuff like that, but, but is, is willing to ask all those questions and push back at some answers, because our job as a council is going to figure out how to fund it. Um, when it finally comes to us, and so we need people in there who are always cognizant of what that cost is going to be and brings that regularly to the table and doesn't ignore costs until the very end. I, you know, this is a five to seven-year team, and we already know it's going to be a lot of work from day one. I think it's going to be really hard for people to jump in and out. And while we as counselors may not know at all how long we're going to serve on the council or whether we're going to run, I, I do, I, it, unfortunately, I don't think it can be answered now, but I do think consistency of the counselors is going to be important. How we answer that now, I'm not sure, but we, I don't think we as a council want people trading out every year. Um, because that harms the council's knowledge of the committee's progress going forward. If every year someone has to re-figure out and get back up to speed about everything that's gone on the year before or two years or five years. So I think that's important, too. Yeah.
It does seem to me, however, that in order to remain on the committee after the next election, you have to be on the council, or we have to relook at the requirements. Because the possibility that somebody's going to serve for all seven years is slim to none. So, all right, any other comments? Shalony?
Uh, I just have a question. Uh, how important is institutional memory for this work?
I think count, I think, uh, people can be prepared to speak to that in their comments if they feel it's important.
Okay, all right. Oh, and I don't know, this, this is a little, it's late and whatever, but this is on my mind, so I'm just going to say it, that I, you know, we've been working great as a council, but I think there's a certain perception in the residents, few residents, anyway, the emails that we're getting about uh, the earlier, uh, whatever it's called, and so it might be, I'm just putting it out there, that it might be good to uh, have, vote for counselors who were from different perspectives. I don't even know if I'm making sense, but I'm hoping you understand what I'm saying.
Are there any other comments? Okay, then I did ask that you be prepared to make, state no more than two minutes why you think you should be elected by the council to this position, and we're just going to go straight down the list. Counselor Brewer.
So as you noticed when you read the charge, the SBC doesn't do the educational program, because the school committee does that. They're elected to do that. What is the importance of institutional memory? That, of course, is a good question. I was on the school committee for five years, so I have a really good sense of what's the school committee's job and what is the school building committee's job. I was on the select board when the select board, in fact, took a leadership role associated with the last school building project. One of the things that I think is critically important here is that we have the two town counselors. One, I think, should definitely, as, and I agree with the charge, that says it should be from the finance committee. I do not believe that both need very strong finance from the standpoint of being on the finance committee. I think it's important to bring another perspective in the second counselor, and I believe that I do that, in that I have had those experiences and I have seen what happened during the last process. And I think one of the things that fell apart during the last process, which I will point out, only failed at the town meeting vote. It did pass through the, through a tax override, is that there was not enough communication to the community about what the school building committee was doing versus what the school committee was doing. It was very unclear to people, and so people felt really left behind. People who were huge supporters of the schools, from the League of Women voters to the PGOs, just didn't feel like they knew what was going on throughout the process. And so that's what I bring to this, is the focus on ensuring that everybody, whether it's the town council or anyone else in the community, knows what's going on. And we have a tendency when we have committees that are heavily staff-based, which this has to be because of the technical skills that are required associated with evaluating all the work of the vendors, is that we need the dedication to ensure that the information will get sent out to the public in a whole bunch of different ways and not at the last minute, meaning like every month, like every meeting, like every newsletter. So people know exactly where we're at, and I think that's incredibly helpful. I also want to point out that both of my kids went to Mark's Meadow, and so I am very understanding of financial constraints, and we closed that school for a financial constraint. And I think it's important that we have a counselor who, um, has had kids in the school and has those connections to the different parent groups as well as the wider community groups. So I skipped my written speech because I was trying to address some of the things people brought up. Thank you.
RC, you're next.
Okay, um, so, uh, I'm really interested in this position, and I, I think that the person who gets it should really, you know, be familiar with the Fort River School, uh, building plan and the Wildwood Plan and the Crocker Farm Plan and the grade six, um, study. Both of my kids went through the Amherst Public Schools. They went to Crocker Farm, the middle school, and both graduated from the high school. We moved here because of the school, uh, the school systems. So I have worked, uh, the first year I was here, I substituted, and so I got a chance to actually work in all the different Amherst Public Schools, so I have an idea about the floor plans and, um, and actually all the different schools in the region I worked at. Um, then I got a job in Holyoke, and I actually found a, found a school that had a worse floor plan than our, than our Fort River and Wildwood floor plans, uh, which was actually a circle. I, I worked on the, uh, the inner row of the circle that were all rooms that were pie-shaped, that had no, uh, no circulation. And, um, so, um, I taught elementary school for twenty years. Eight of those were teaching art and twelve teaching in the classroom. And as an art teacher, I taught a class for autistic students and one for multiply disabled children. Um, as a classroom teacher, I, of course, participated in IEPs for kids that were receiving special ed services and, um, in Holyoke. I was working at, at downtown schools. All three of the schools that I worked at were downtown schools, and they, ninety percent of the student population were, um, from families that were below the poverty line, and, uh, a majority were of Puerto Rican ancestry, and many of those, um, of course, spoke Spanish. So, um, also, I worked with the, um, uh, the Zero Energy Task Force while they were preparing to get our building bylaw passed. Uh, that was a great experience, and, um, I think that is about it. Um, lots of experience in education.
Mandy Jo Hanneke.
Thank you. Um, so I'm going to start with that I have a child who's finishing up sixth grade, so I believe on this council, the most recent experience navigating elementary schools, classrooms, and all of that as a parent. Um, that experience, I will admit, is not at the Amherst Public Schools. It is at the Pioneer Valley Chinese Immersion Charter School. But that gives me a unique perspective that is very new to this area on space needs as it relates to dual-language programs, because I've seen it for seven years now. Um, and that is something that I believe any new building will have to deal with, and there are not many examples in this um, area dealing with the unique needs of a dual-language program as it relates to a building. Um, so I think I bring that experience and perspective and all. I also, as you guys, I don't think I have to say this with you all, um, you've seen over the last eighteen months that I do my research, that I listen to people, I listen to people of various perspectives, and I am not unwilling to, I'm not shy about asking questions regarding the choices that are being made that would impact the town's ability to pay or the cost of the building. That I believe it's very important to keep that front and center as we're looking at a new- That I believe it's very important to keep that front and center as we're looking at a new building, and since the school building committee will be dealing with decisions that directly relate and go to the costs, the ultimate projected cost of the building, um, I think it's important to have that upfront, and I am one that will always keep that there. Um, and, and I do work well with all opinions, and I'm willing to always listen to all opinions, and I do think a committee is better suited when we, as members, bring an open mind to anyone contacting the committee members about their thoughts. Thanks.
Kathy Shane.
I'm a, I'm a trained economist and, uh, have worked most of my life on finance issues, albeit more focused on in the healthcare world, but I had a number of years where I worked with a labor union, where I was their research and policy person, which meant that any budget that needed to be looked at, I was the one who looked at it. Um, it was a nice, uh, for me, it was something I just loved doing and trying to think through complex problems as where the school will be with multiple issues on which site should it be in, is the sixth grade moving up or not? How can it be configured in a way that it will make it feel small and intimate, but, but be the larger school as we're envisioning it to be? Is something I would love to be working on, um, because I like the complexity, I like to read complicated documents, but also to listen, um, one of the labor union experiences I had was always being, um, in a potential controversy, controversy where two sides, and my role was to bring everybody together by finding, um, where there was enough commonality, but also to listen to nuances. But I, I think what Mandy said at the beginning on what qualities is, um, those of you who have been with me on the finance committee or recently JCPC, I like to ask tough questions, and I would like to be able to be in a position to ask for more information that we need to make decisions about how expensive does this building need to be? But also if we spend a large amount of money, are we getting extremely high value for the design so that we can be proud and the town can be proud and celebrate a building when we bring it home as something that will bring lasting, uh, benefits to the kids who are in it, to the people who are teaching in it. And then last, I think not least is, I like to work hard, um, and am willing to do put in the extra hours, and I am particularly a morning person, so I was thrilled with a seven thirty in the morning starting time, so, um, I work best when I'm fresh in the morning and then can go back and read. So I don't think I'll say anymore, um, you know, the training I had as an economist didn't completely prepare me for the world of federal, state, and local tough decisions, but it meant that we always were dealing with complexity and, uh, trying to think through issues. And then the public finance side had to deal with documents all the time, um, so it's one of the reasons I ran for the council, actually, and that's it.
Steve Schreiber.
So when Lynn was, when the President Griesmer was leading us, us through the exercise of what we thought the ideal qualities are, um, it's really hard to answer that because we don't know who else will be on the team, so it's like asking what the ideal qualities of a baseball team are when you only have two players named. So there, um, I feel very strongly that there needs to be an architect on this building committee, and I'm the only person on the council that has that experience, and furthermore, I'm the only person on the council that worked for the architect that did the former school feasibility study. But then furthermore, I'm the only person on the council whose students designed the Fort River School as a student project last semester, but I say that kind of tongue-in-cheek, but obviously my experiences as an architect will give me the ability to, or really help me work with the committee to ask, um, hopefully to ask the right questions. I certainly don't know a lot, but I know how to, I know what I don't know, and I know how to find out things that I don't know. But I also know how to help the other members of the school committee and my fellow counselors who are not on the, the school committee, I'm sorry, the building committee, to, um, basically lead them through the discussion on things like site selection, the development of the building program, the, um, the architectural characteristics of this. The, my daughter, we have one child, my daughter, she's a alumna of Wildwood, and also the Amherst Regional Middle School, and also the Amherst Regional High School. We live halfway between Fort River and Wildwood. I love seven thirty in the morning, I'll work hard for you, and I, I look, look forward to this opportunity if you grant it to me.
Um, Andy Steinberg.
Yeah, I'll be, uh, very brief, but, uh, start out with something that Steve had mentioned in his too, which is that, uh, I had two children who went to Fort River School when it was a fairly new school, and, uh, went through the entire Amherst school system then, uh, gave me the, um, unique experience of observing what was then a fairly new Fort River School and seeing how problematic it was in the design, the mistakes that had been made in choosing what was built and how it was built and where it was built, um, given the time that was going on. Um, I think that, uh, we need to be very vigilant and learn from our past experience and do it right this time. Um, I was very involved in, uh, as a member of the select board in the prior process, but I was not on the school building committee. Uh, I did speak at town meeting on behalf of the select board in support of the, uh, proposal every time it came, uh, when it came up before the, uh, town meeting. And so I became fairly involved with the, uh, project then. My observation about the, um, prior project was that there were problems and, uh, we do have to be very vigilant that the school building committee is not the school committee, and decisions about where sixth grade goes are not school building committee's decisions. They are the school committee's decisions, but that there has to be a way to have a dialogue between the two committees because of the consequence, the consequences, and the ability to pay for the decisions that are made, and to recognize that in that last, uh, round, that some of the community dissatisfaction was, um, in the educational plan, um, and part of it was in the building, and that they really do go together so that there has to be a good dialogue, uh, but a respectful dialogue in respect of, um, each other's appropriate elected or selected roles. Uh, just a couple other things is that, um, the, uh, fact that I've had all of this institutional memory with something that we talked about in the last one is that um, I do think the energy, um, factors in the building are important. As mentioned by one other, uh, counselor, Counselor Dumont. Um, I was in the group that worked together between, uh, uh, people who were representing the town manager and people who were the original advocates of the first net zero energy to derive the net zero energy, um, bylaw as then it was ultimately passed and is now in place, and, uh, if given the opportunity, I hope that this becomes, uh, the first building where we really uh, can achieve the goals of, um, that particular bylaw and prove that it works. So I guess that's, uh, what I can say, thank you.
Hey. Now we know why you're all in the council. Um, so we're going to do a roll call vote, and when your name is called, first round of roll call is going to be to vote for someone who represents the finance committee. At this point, the only two counselors on the slate that represent the finance committee are Counselor Shane and Counselor Steinberg. So in the first round, that's what you will be voting for, one or the other, and I begin with, uh, Steve Schreiber.
Counselor Shane.
And Steinberg.
I'm gonna abstain.
Um, Schwartz.
Steinberg.
Ballmelm.
Kathy Shane.
Brewer.
Steinberg.
DeAngelis.
Shane.
Dumont.
Kathy Shane.
Griesmer is abstaining. Uh, Haneky.
Shane.
Pam.
Shane.
Ross. Ryan.
Ms. Steinberg.
And Shane.
I guess I'm gonna do what Andy did, I'll abstain.
Well, so at this point, I have six votes for uh, Shane and four votes for Steinberg. And three abstentions. We can do the round, Andy, your hand is up.
My goodness. I think that at this point that we've had a vote, I congratulate, uh, Counselor Shane, wish her well, and it's gonna be a very hard process, and I ask to withdraw then because I do think that it should not be two people from the finance committee.
Okay. Alright, um, then I, we will move to the next one, which includes Counselor, uh, Lisa Brewer, Darcy Dumont, Mandy Jo Haneky, and Steve Schreiber.
Lynn?
Yes.
Um, I would like to withdraw.
Okay. So it includes Brewer, Haneky, and Schreiber. Um, and we begin with Steinberg.
Schreiber.
Schwartz.
Brewer.
Ballmelm.
Schreiber.
Brew, uh, Brewer.
Brewer.
DeAngelis.
Brewer.
Dumont.
Schreiber.
Griesmer is abstaining. Uh, Haneky.
I'm gonna vote for myself, Haneky.
Pam.
Schreiber.
Ross.
Schreiber.
Ryan.
Driver.
Shane.
Schreiber.
And did I already call on Steinberg? Yes, I did, okay.
You didn't call Steve.
I'm sorry?
I don't think you called me.
So, I'm sorry, um, yeah, Schreiber.
I'll abstain.
Okay, so in this case, Schreiber has seven votes, which is a majority. Uh, and Brewer has three, so, um, I would like to make a motion that we uh, appoint to the Elementary School Building Authority, Counselor Shane and Counselor Schreiber. Is there a second?
Second, Shallony.
Yes.
I think we need to waive we need to waive eight point six.
Eight point six.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Alright, um, and let me move to waive council rules, procedure rule eight point six for counselor appointments to the Elementary School Building Committee. Is there, that's a motion, is there a second? Don't know what it means.
Second.
Yes, this means we can do this tonight, we don't have to bring it back a second time. Motion's been made and seconded, is there any further discussion? Okay, then, um, we start with Schwartz.
Abstain.
This is to waive the rule.
Oh, sorry, yes, all for it, thank you.
Okay, um, Shallony Ballmelm.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
DeAngelis.
Yes.
Dumont.
Yes.
Griesmer, yes, Haneky.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Shane.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Steinberg.
Yes.
Okay, so we, that allows us to then move forward, uh, and in this case, the motion that I would like to make is that we appoint counselors.
Lynn?
Yes.
We have to recommend the town manager appoint.
Oh, that, thank you. I would like to recommend that the town manager appoint Counselor Shane and Counselor Schreiber to this Elementary School Building Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Wait, 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 wait. Oh, you just, we, we had a motion, and I, shouldn't we specify that one's, one's from the finance committee?
I'm sorry, you're right, I was, it, I couldn't see the motion, thank you. Alright, this is my motion to recommend the town manager appoint under Charter Section three point three C counselors, Kathy Shane from the Finance Committee and Counselor Steve Schreiber to the Elementary School Building Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Evan, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I, I felt a little uncomfortable with this, um, and so I'm going to abstain, but I'm also someone who believes you should explain when you're abstaining, so I wanted to just state very briefly. Um, this whole thing feels weird to me because the town manager is the appointing authority, and he is the one who is responsible for taking a holistic view of the committee, looking at everyone else who's on it, the residents, and putting together what he thinks is the most effective committee. Um, we, we did a little roll call of who we think should be on it, um, and I think that he has that information. I think he's heard the statements from everyone, um, but I actually don't feel comfortable recommending to the town manager who he should appoint, um, and I think that if he disagrees with either of the two people who got majority votes, he should feel free to appoint someone else, so I am going to abstain, which is nothing against either of the two people, um, but I wanted to just make that clear.
Okay. Any further discussion at this time? Alright, then we're going to start with Shallony Ballmelm.
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer.
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis.
Yes.
Darcy Dumont.
Yes.
Griesmer's, yes, Haneky.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Uh, Evan Ross.
Stain.
Ryan.
Yes.
Shane.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Steinberg.
Yes.
And Schwartz.
Stain.
So it passes eleven for none against and two abstentions. Okay, we're moving on to the Town Council Appointments. And this is where I'm going to call on Evan because it's regarding the Planning Board.
Yes, um, I'll keep this brief because you have the report. Uh, Oka met to discuss Planning Board Appointments. We had been laying the groundwork to deal with the three expiring terms. Uh, on the report, Oka felt that the pool was insufficient at this time to move forward with appointments. Um, and so decided that we were not in a position to actually move forward to interviews and make a recommendation for appointment. Uh, technically, if we do nothing, members can continue to serve beyond their term, but we felt that it would provide um, the, the body and us a little more feeling of security. Um, if we extended the terms uh, throughout the summer, we've confirmed with, um, all three members that they're willing to serve at least for a little bit longer after their term. Um, expired thirty, even if, uh, some of them are not seeking reappointment. Uh, and so this buys the council and now the CRC some time to recruit um, and to do some active recruitment so that we can, uh, do a longer term appointment, um, to the Planning Board, uh, sometime this summer.
Okay, so, uh, any questions at this time? Okay, so the motion is, uh, go ahead, Evan, if you would please.
Um, the motion is to ex, um, so I move to extend the appointments of Planning Board Members, Michael Burtwhistle, Christine Gray-Mullin, and David Levinstein from June thirtieth, twenty twenty to August thirty first, twenty twenty.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, then I'm gonna do a roll call vote. Brewer.
Yes.
DeAngelus.
Yes.
Dumont.
Yes.
Reesmer's, yes. Hanke.
Yes.
Pam. Ross.
Yes.
Ryan. George.
Yes.
Shane.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Steinberg.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Ball Mill.
Yes.
Okay, and that is unanimous. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Oka. This was your last task that you needed to do. Your first chair was Sarah and succeeded then by Evan, and I want to thank the entire committee. Uh, you've blazed trails, you took your hard knocks, uh, you dealt with the issue of process and then passed it on to other committees. And I really want to just thank you all for serving on this committee, your continued service up until this very point when now the appointment of the Planning Board becomes the responsibility of CRC. Okay, so thank you. Um, we're going to move on to, um, committee reports very quickly. Mandy Jo, is there any other report?
I just want to use the opportunity to announce that this Wednesday, there is a public hearing joint with the Planning Board at six thirty on, uh, the zoning bylaw amendment for uh, zoning bylaw eleven point two five zero voting quantities as it relates to site plan review.
Thank you. Andy Finance?
Uh, there's no real additional report, uh, beyond what is already in the written report. Just want to remind everybody to check the dates on when we have hearings on various departments and if they're, uh, hearings that you're interested in, you should be sure to block them out in your schedule.
Those are actually not official hearings, so they're just meetings with the.
No, they're, they are, you are correct. They are meetings with department heads to hear from them about their particular sections of the department, uh, budget.
Right, but it's an opportune time for counselors to learn more in depth about each of the issues related to the budget. George, GOL?
Just point out to, uh, my colleagues that we have come up with a process for making recommendations to Town Council for finance appointments, and that's in the packet. We are very much indebted to Oka and we follow their process fairly closely, but with one difference regarding interviews, but that's in the packet for people to consult. If they have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them, but at this hour, I'm hoping they don't.
I'm sorry. Kathy. JCPC.
We have nothing new to report. You, you got our report, which was very long, that you could read it.
And we have work to do in the future. Um, outreach, Oka, anything else, Evan?
Yeah, I, I know it's late, but since this is the last Oka Committee Report, uh, I wrote this in the report, but I did want to say publicly that I owe a deep amount of gratitude to all the members of Oka. This committee has worked for seventeen, eighteen months, and I put in the report some of our accomplishments. Um, because I want to make sure that I recognize the members for the work that we put in. Um, cause it's really been an incredible amount of work and some of it has been difficult and grueling and sometimes so painful. Um, and a lot of it has been around process, and I said this to the committee in our last meeting, that process isn't often the, the sexy stuff that makes headlines that people get excited about. Um, and, and so often I felt like we didn't get necessarily our due for the hard work, not, not from y'all, but more broadly. Um, and so, uh, thank, I, I want to thank them because they worked really hard, and I especially want to thank Sarah. Um, because she, she was a really great chair, um, during what were definitely the most difficult months as we were getting our footing and, and dealing with um, getting that first complicated process set up and, and spending week at literally every week in meetings and sitting on the phone with the town attorney, and it's stuff I never want to do again. Um, but I, I want to thank everyone for putting in the time and it, it was really a pleasure. Um, and, and my only sadness at this point is that we weren't able to spend our final meeting together, uh, in person um, or able to go get a drink after it. So, um, thank, thank you to, to honestly to all members of, of Oka um, for all of your work because it was a tremendous amount of work and this entire council owes this committee, um, a, a debt of gratitude. We have produced for you a thirty-page document outlining our process and all of the different steps. It was put in your packet today. I wanted to get it to you earlier, but Adobe Acrobat was fighting me on it. Um, I don't expect you read it for today. I don't expect that many of you will read it ever, um, but it is there as your gift from Oka. Um, on how its council can bring together, can bring forward, uh, recommendations for appointments to multiple member bodies appointed by the council, balancing privacy, transparency, and working within the incredibly annoying but important constraints of open meeting law. So, thank you.
And I would like to ask Kathina to strike from the record that they don't start drinking at eleven thirty in the morning. Uh, Darcy Dumont, you have a, you are doing town services?
Uh, yes. Um, I, I don't have anything to report other than that we had uh, another group of reappointments today and the, uh, school building, the basic appointments to the School Building Committee, which are coming to the next Town Council Meeting, and we started at our review process, but I also did want to say that I, that I did that modification that GOL made to the interview process that allows people to, each of the members to ask interview questions and to ask follow-up questions.
Okay. Um, we did the approval of minutes on the consent agenda. Town Managers Report, Paul?
You have my written report. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Are there questions of Paul? Yes, Mandy Jo.
Apologize, I have a lot of questions. So, and I know it's late, so I'm gonna run through them all. You don't have to answer them all tonight. Um, and some of them are just basics. Um, but the library, I watched the library meeting, gosh, Thursday, Friday, I don't even remember when it was, when they talked about reopening. Um, and one of the things the library director said was that you were saying that the buildings wouldn't open to the public until like September. Um, and I am very concerned about the library not being able to open and stating that right now, not being able to open till September to the public. Um, I know in phase one, which was four weeks ago, they could have been allowed to open curbside. Um, we're four weeks out from that first being able to, and they're still not doing curbside rentals or loans. Phase two started a week ago and that was allowed for, and under that for libraries, circulation desk pickup, inside desk pickup. Um, I don't know what phase three will bring for a library, but phase two started a week ago, phase three might start two weeks from now, and we still don't have curbside pickup at our library. Um, but curbside pickup and library books are not in what I see as the most dire need for libraries, um, at this point. We've said it from the time these buildings closed. We don't have public bathrooms with the buildings closed. We don't have, now it's summer, a cooling station with these buildings closed. We don't have for our most neediest internet access and computer access. None of that can be transferred to an outside curbside pickup. And so I would really urge us to think about which buildings need to be opened sooner rather than later for things to serve um, our needy residents and cooling, and this goes to one of my other ones, homeless. It's not just the homeless that need an indoor cooling space. It's our elderly that don't have air conditioning in their buildings when we hit ninety degrees four days in a row this week, or whatever it's calling for. We don't have a place to send people to get out of the heat right now, and I think we need to start prioritizing that, and a library is a fantastic place to do that. And so that's my point on library and homeless. Uh, I was curious when meters will start to begin to be enforced again, um, as we are, you know, we know it has a significant strain on the budget, and as things start opening, uh, the demand for parking will increase, and the economist in me says when demand goes up, um, you know, supply will go down and then you need to start charging to even those out. So I was curious when the thinking on charging will be. Um, elections, uh, you mentioned in your report that location options are being considered. I'm curious what some of them are, and I'm wondering if outside in a parking lot is an option for September. Um, even if we have to do tents to allow for social distancing and all. And then playgrounds. Um, yay. I, can I say yay that they are open? My daughter and I went to one this weekend in Mill River, and it was fantastic to allow her to actually play on a playground. Um, it was easy to social distance in general, um, but I was wondering about the school playgrounds because when I drove by Crocker the other day, I think the snow fencing was still up around the playground, and without the school playgrounds and with Groff Park closed, there is pretty much one playground in town. And that will make it harder as school gets out to social distance. So I, I wanna wonder about how we can get more playgrounds open if the school ones aren't open, and I wanted to mention that the closed sign was still on the bench at Mill River, potentially creating confusion. It might be better if we create a new sign that indicates some rules and expectations about the use of the playground, including mask wearing and all. Um, and then, uh, it sounds strange, but when Groff opens, are we gonna have a ribbon cutting? Cause I think it would be really good to have one, even if they're socially distanced. So sorry for the long, uh, number of questions.
It's like, Lynn, I can run through those if you'd like. Ribbon cutting, yes, we've been talking, I would go the reverse order. Ribbon cutting, yes, we've been talking about that, uh, how to do that successfully. We don't want to draw a crowd. We're, you know, one of our tensions that we have is that we don't want to create things that draw people together, but on the same, uh, the, on the same token, we, um, we also are trying to, we're establishing places where people can come into town and eat because we want to support the businesses. So if there's a balance to be had, we, we choose, we, we, we will do it. Uh, there'll be some kind of ribbon cutting of some sort, but it might be very, uh, small number of people, and it might be some televised or something like that. Uh, signs on the bench, we can get that fixed. Um, thanks for pointing that out. Uh, school, um, we, when we open the playgrounds, we're in communication with the schools. They have chosen not to unlock theirs, their playgrounds. Um, but I can check back with them if they've thought anything differently about that. Uh, elections, we're, um, thinking a lot about that. Um, we've looked at, we're looking at outside tents, um, because these are, and we're talking with the schools right now. We'll probably have one, right, we're, we're thinking about one location, um, that has a minimal impact on the schools and not because the schools are gonna be open because they are scheduled not to be open on the two days, but for the, sort of the cleaning of the building afterwards and things like that. So we have some options that the Town Clerk is leading the team that has the Fire Chief, the DPW Superintendent, and the Facilities Manager working with the school district. Um, we also have talked about closing a road down and just taking, taking over a road for, for permit for, um, voting on that day, and also encouraging people to vote in advance if at all possible. So lots of different options available. They have to come to you at some point. Um, charging for parking, uh, we, we sort of have a metric in our minds of about July one, evaluate that again, depending on, you know, paying attention to the number of parking spaces that are in demand, knowing that we're gonna be taking away parking spaces as we start to, um, move, uh, restaurants onto the streets. Um, so monitoring that, um, right now, we're utilizing our park enforcement officers at different, uh, utilizing other things, so we would reprogram them back, uh, into town. And, uh, so, so there's some other things about that. Um, opening the, the library, opening buildings to the public is a, is a pretty, um, is, is a challenging thing. Very few places are open to the public and making sure that we have protocols in, in place are, are the, is the real key. Um, and just even opening this building that where I am now, the Town Hall, and where it looks like you're virtually there, um, i- is, is it just for our employees has been a big challenge because we have to maintain, every, we have to maintain the, the names of everybody who come in. They, we have multiple sanitizing stations as you walk into the building. Um, so when we start to open to the public, that's a bit different things. The cooling centers, we've talked about that. Uh, looking at different options for that as well, um, recognizing the need for that, that at the same time. And don't have ready solutions to announce right now, but it is something that our team has been talking about for a bit now. Um, and there are different um, options for that as well. It's not just the library. There are other options that we can put together for that. So, but on our list.
Yes, Alyssa.
I was just gonna reiterate again, because I always like to say it, that I really appreciate how hard you're working to try and figure out how to keep staff safe, right? Keep staff safe first and then bring in the public. One thing I just wanted to check in on is, given the different phasing, when offices were first open, in theory, it was for twenty-five percent capacity, but it sounds like in the report that you're bringing everybody back. So how, how do we thread that needle? Is it now just, everybody's allowed to go back to work as long as you put Plexiglas in, or what, what's our approach to that?
So we have installed plastic Plexiglas, but we've also distanced people, utilizing meeting room space to put people in, so we, we are social distancing people. Um, we're, uh, the twenty-five percent capacity is, is in a, you know, um, we're working on that as, as sort of the metric, but there's also, you can have someone in a office next to someone in another office. They're not considered in the twenty-five percent. Uh, there's still people who are working, uh, remotely. Um, if they can do that successfully, that's, that's, we leave that to the department, but we have had our team, which is the HR Director, the Facilities Manager, and the Assistant Town Manager sort of going through department by department, person by person as to who is eligible to come back and who isn't. Um, so we've accommodated as many as we possibly can at this point, but not everybody can be accommodated in the building.
Dorothy? Please unmute, Dorothy. Dorothy, you need to unmute.
I'm working on it. Okay. A comment and a question. I think the library starts curbside pickup this Thursday. And I, I know that seems to be a little bit late, but I think that they're starting. And I, I know that seems to be a little bit late, but I think that's, they're starting it. Then my question is, why is Groff Park, we were told it would open in, in May. I know we've had COVID, but construction was allowed to go on. And then I heard yesterday there was gonna be a water slide, which I wasn't aware of. Um, I have gone by and peeked in through the locked gates, and I see a lot of really interesting looking things in there. Um, so when is it opening and is there really a water slide?
Uh, there's no water slide. We don't have a date for it to be open. Um, there are a, a lot of punch list items that our contractor is working on. Um, and some of the things that our DPW is gonna have to do, uh, to get it open. Um, the end is in sight, but is there, before we can remove the fencing and open it up, now we have a meeting out there tomorrow morning at seven thirty AM to sort of go through all, what the punch list items are and review that with the Superintendent Public Works and the Assistant Town Manager.
I look forward to it.
Yeah, it looks awesome, I have to say.
Seen a picture of it.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions at this point? Okay, then, um, on the Town Council comments, uh, I basically will be doing follow-up from this agenda and setting the agenda for the following week. We have a bunch of financials, things coming up on the twenty ninth and also then on the thirteenth and the twentieth of July. But given the hour, I'm not gonna go into any more than that. I will be letting you know as we get the agenda set. Um, future agenda items, questions, comments? Okay, and then any other counselor comments? Okay, we dealt with topics not reasonably anticipated by dealing with the policing discussion earlier. There's no executive session, and so I call the meeting adjourned. Thank you.